The neighborhood board for Manoa to order on November, this is November first. Kind of get used to that. It's always weird transitioning between the two months between October and November. I don't say many months in general on the first day. So moving on, we have a busy schedule tonight, so let's get through this really quickly. First off, we have the Honolulu Fire Department. Please go ahead and make your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so I would like to read the statistics for October of twenty twenty-three. For the Manoa Fire Station. Oh, by the way, I'm sorry. My name is Kali Stevens. I am the captain here at the Manoa Fire Station. Okay, so the following stats are for October of twenty twenty-three. Uh, we had sixteen activated alarms, forty-one medical alarms. We had three motor vehicle collisions, one mountain rescue, and one hazardous material incident. And I'm gonna read for you the fire safety tip of the month. So the fire safety tip is a holiday cooking safety. Keep everyone safe this holiday season. Thanksgiving is the break, is the peak day for home cooking fires with more than three times the daily average for such incidents. Christmas Day and Christmas Eve rank second and third with both having nearly twice the daily average. Unattended cooking is by far the leading contributing factor in cooking fires and fire deaths. Stay in the kitchen and focus on the food when you're cooking on a stove top. Stay in the home when cooking your turkey and check on it frequently. If you want a fried turkey, purchase it from a grocery store, restaurant, or buy a fryer that does not use oil. Turkey fryers that use cooking oil are not safe. These fryers use large amounts of oil at high temperatures which can cause devastating burns. Consider purchasing an infrared fryer, air fryer, or electric turkey fryer that has been listed by a qualifying testing laboratory. Do not leave fires unattended when in use. Um, I'll also like to address a couple of questions that were asked uh last month when Captain Edwards was delivering the um the stats. So there was a question regarding uh instruction for wildlife fire emergencies. Um, so we have on our website, which is fire.honolulu.gov. We have a section that talks about how to prevent those fires or how to how to prevent them from spreading to your your area. And also actions that you can take um when we encounter a wildland fire. Uh, once again, that's on our website at fire.honolulu.gov. And we also have some pamphlets at the station, at the Manoa Fire Station. We have about um right around fifty at the moment. So you can come by and pick up a pamphlet as well. Uh, there is also a question regarding a like an all-in-one fire extinguisher that was seen on Amazon. So our department does not endorse any fire extinguishers. Um, I would, I would recommend going to the store that sells fire extinguishers like um Target and see if they can bring those fire extinguishers in. Um, so that's all for this evening.
Thank you very much. Uh, members of the neighborhood board, any questions for the Honolulu Fire Department?
Uh, thank you very much, Captain. Uh, your first answer was in response to one of my questions and I think you answered it very well. So thank you very much. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else from the board? Uh, hearing and seeing done from the board, uh, Mr. Robert Fox, go ahead. Robert, you're muted still. Robert, you're still muted. I'm sorry. Sorry, Robert. Yeah, uh, you're still muted. We can't hear you. Um. Perhaps you might be able to type your question in um in the chat. In the meantime, uh, Jackson, um, sorry. You have your hand raised, Jackson?
Yeah, Chair, I was just gonna tell him if he could type his question and then right now he's actually muted on WebEx, but um, before he wasn't and we weren't getting any mic microphone pickup. So I don't know if his mic's not plugged in or.
Does that help a little bit?
Oh, that's it. Now we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. I had like a uh voice enhancer plugged into my computer. My apologies to you all. So um, I'm a little concerned um that the Army Corps of Engineers has decided that they're going to reseed Lahaina with seeds of an invasive species of grass uh which were the one of the contributing factors of the fire in Lahaina. We already have that in Honolulu. Um, I was proactive enough to contact the Army Corps of Engineers. P.S. There's thirty-six numbers for the Army Corps of Engineers. And I couldn't get through to any one of them. I left messages and this has been for three weeks. I've been trying to get a hold of them. I've had no response back. I've had no communication. It seems like they're an entity in and of themselves. So clearly, individuals do not have the influence that perhaps the fire department would have. I request the fire department to please contact the Army Corps of Engineers and stop them from reseeding Maui or any other island in the Hawaiian chain with seeds of an invasive species which is known to be an uh contributing factor to the burn which we will, we're experiencing right now in Mililani. Uh, that idea of trying to restore the landscape using a grass that is harmful to the Hawaiian Islands is insane. Uh, we have tried to talk with the Army Corps of Engineers before. And there's some young people in Washington, D.C. who don't live here. They've never been here. They think they know what they're doing and it's God bless them all. We appreciate their their enthusiasm. But this is serious stuff. And since we cannot get a hold of the Army Corps of Engineers, I do seriously request the fire department of the city and county of Honolulu to contact the Army Corps of Engineers and tell them not to plant this horribly invasive species of grass. Thank you.
Uh, okay, I will forward the question to our community relations office.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, is there anybody else uh who would like to speak with the Honolulu Fire Department? Hearing and seeing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Night. And up next on the agenda is the Honolulu Police Department. Is anybody from the Honolulu Police Department here tonight? Maybe if they come back on later on. Uh, in the meantime, um, anybody from the Board of Water Supply? No, I'm not hearing or seeing anybody. Uh, speaking through this because of the important agenda here. Um. Do we have uh Mayor Belangiardi's representative?
Yes, sir.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. Um, happy November, everyone. I believe that we are through Halloween and kicking off into the the fast fury ahead of us of the holiday season. So I'm just wishing everyone the best there. So I put into the chat the mayor's newsletter. Couple of highlights that we wanted to share with you and and calls to action to you. Um, first is uh has to do with our Oahu's climate strategy. So it was announced today that the Office of Climate Change Sustainability and Resiliency is taking feedback. Um, they have many events throughout the month of November. I'm gonna highlight a few in your area that I think would be most relevant. Um, craft fairs, farmers markets, and then a few online things is what they're trying to do. So on the fourth, so that is Saturday, um, at the Kaimuki High School Craft Fair, they will have a booth there and will be taking some feedback on that. Um, there will be virtual open houses on November sixth and seventh. And you can visit climatreadyowaho.org for all of the event details and to participate in the event. So wanted to give you that opportunity, especially given the most recent conversation here regarding wildland fires. And I wanna I wanna offer um my own services in this area. I don't think that HPD um is necessarily the right representative for your voice to UCASE. And so what I'd like to do is offer having the conversation with CCSR because they are uh the folks that probably would have the most um influence in this area working with UCASE on these kind of things. So I'm gonna bring this concern to them so that when they're involved in any of these conversations, that is top of mind as well. So I'd like to just go ahead and proactively offer that. I don't think, um, I think UCASE is probably a little busy right now. And that's why you're not getting any any callbacks. Um, I understand the ongoing frustrations with UCASE and the various projects, but um wanna be a little bit more proactive on your behalf and share that information a little bit more broadly as well. In addition to that, want to also share that we are so excited to have received a million-dollar grant from the Bloomberg Philanthropies. Um, Bloomberg has been really, really generous to the city and county of Honolulu. And at this time, we are one of seven entities across the country that got a million-dollar grant to work on some of the uh what we're calling Vaipana series signages around very um high-traffic tourist spots that will help tell the story of our people in our place. So very interactive, um, much more twenty-first century than just, you know, a sign and a plaque that has to uh stay kind of stagnant for years and years and years. This is something that we're working on to tell the story throughout the island of, again, the specialness of our place and our people. And so we're excited about that. Um, maybe not such a direct impact to you, but definitely something that we're proud of. And that's expanding our city's services for convenience centers so that uh hopefully we can reduce some of the illegal dumping. Um, I know that Kaple is a little bit far from you and may not have that direct impact, but it is something that um again is a commitment on um the behalf of the Belangiardi administration. Last and not least, I'm gonna put this into the chat as well so that you have the phone number and an email address. But the Neighborhood Commission Office is looking for some compatriots with our friend Jackson here um to help facilitate these meetings across the island. So if you know anyone that wants to help and wants to a good job with the city and county of Honolulu um and can help us out and facilitate these meetings and make sure that the public voice is heard, we'd be happy to have those applications. Again, check the chat, um, nco@honolulu.gov or seven six eight three seven one zero. So that or that's the talking points. Um, wanna get back to you some reports from last month regarding park safety and specifically the homeless woman in Manoa Park and the moped and um the other personal belonging issues that uh were brought up by a few of you. Um, DFM, their Stored Property Ordinance Branch, and folks from the Department of Parks and Recreation Service did walk through the area on October sixteenth. So just a few, just shortly after our last meeting. Um, unfortunately, they did not see anybody with a moped or personal belongings blocking anything. Um, they are aware of the reported female, will keep their eyes and ears open, and they're working with um the community policing team from District Seven to stay uh, you know, aware and vigilant on this. Again, if you have any any concerns, you don't have to wait till these meetings. You can, and I should probably put this in the chat too, um, email DFMroads. So that's D as in dog, F as in fox, M as in I don't know, moose, um, roads@honolulu.gov. And that's the Stored Property Ordinance Branch, and they will be able to uh respond to those a little bit quicker. So DPR, um, Department of Parks and Rec, again, will stay vigilant in this. Gonna jump ahead um because we had a similar issue blocking the sidewalk near the theater. So same time, um, same folks went out. They went out and they did observe the individual. They removed the trash. They uh asked him to leave. Um, they offered community services for sheltering. Uh, the individual unfortunately declined at this time. And so the Office of Housing and Homelessness, the HPD District Seven Community Policing Team are aware and will continue efforts to assist this individual. So thank you for that report. We hope that you saw um a proactive response in that regard. The other area um that was brought up last month was overgrowth in the Woodlawn Bridge area and the needing to be dredged. So happy to report um that the scheduled cutting and removing of the vegetation overgrowth for that area is scheduled for the latter part of November, pending weather and available manpower resources, of course. Um, the dredging of the sediment rocks from the stream and the and the bridge area will be scheduled as soon as the heavy equipment resources are available. So they are moving forward on um cleaning out the vegetation overgrowth and then um scheduling the dredging of the stream. So I hope uh that answered everything and I didn't miss anything from last month. And I'm happy to answer any questions and do some more research in the next month.
Thank you, Kim. Are there any questions from the members of the board? Hearing, seeing none. Members of the community, any questions for Kim, uh Mayor Belangiardi's representative?
Yeah, I have a question. Kim, this is Brett Chrisagay. Again, uh greetings to your dad. Hey, I wanna ask, as you know, the Manoa Banyan Court thing has been kind of in limbo for a long time now. Uh, just to recap, the um Linyi Chung Association submitted it a second draft EA on or about twenty-three December last year. The community had thirty days during the holidays to put together response by twenty-three January. Since then, nothing, nothing heard. The applicant, in this case, LYCA, you know, had, as far as we know, based on the last update last month on this topic, no response received by DPP from the applicant to the public comment received. My question is, what's the deadline for that? Because if you look at the originally submitted documents that LYCA submitted, some of the things in there such as approval for sewer connections and such, they've all expired. So um it it seems unreasonable to expect the applicant to take whatever time they think they need, you know. It it, you know, particularly when the public had only thirty days during the holidays to put together its response. So that's my question is, what's the time limit on you know, that the applicant has that DPP, you know, but then, because they're waiting for something from the applicant to you know, go the next step.
Sure, that's a fair question. And I apologize, I kinda let Manoa Banyan Court fall off my radar, so I'm gonna have to circle back with DPP. I'll be happy to get that answer. Um, if you are okay waiting till next month, I can provide it then or I can try and find one and get it emailed out to the chair sooner.
Oh, well, I don't know when they're gonna take their holiday break, but yeah, may maybe sooner better than later, because
Okay.
Their their practice has been to put things in play during holiday periods. So Thanksgiving, Christmas, you know.
Yeah.
Scheduled to be recessed in December. So to your point, Brett, uh, we won't be meeting in December unless our board decides to meet in December, but I think we're recessed.
Okay, I will get an answer sooner.
Thanks for reminding about that. Um, in which case, the agenda, the meeting minutes, uh, well, the agenda unfortunately may have to, will have to be amended to reflect that there's no meeting in December. My apologies for that. That's my, that's on me. That's on my bad. Um, any other questions in the community? Uh, Whitney?
This is not a question for Ms. Farland, sorry, but rather a response to uh Brett. I was gonna wait and tell the you know, part on the agenda where we have the update on NBC, but I have two things um to share of note about that. Um. One is that I ran into uh Charles Wong at um in the you know, at an event, and he said that they are still pursuing that project. It will be ready when it's ready, uh, quote, and that, you know, it it's, he gave me no indication of the timeline that he's working on, but they are still pursuing that. Um, the other thing to note or to to share with everyone is that the person who was responsible for this project in uh DPP, uh Zachary Stoddard, who some folks might remember presented to our neighborhood board on um some of the aspects of the process, has passed away. Um. According to DPP, you know, I I do check in with them every once in a while, and he had some sort of accident. I don't really know much further. Um. The project had followed him. He had actually switched departments uh from the Department of Land Use Permitting to the Department of Planning. In DPP, those are separate like subdepartments in DPP. The project had followed him because that's how it works. Generally, somebody is assigned a case and they follow it sort of through its entire history in order to be able to understand, you know, all the aspects of it and keep all the players. I know that for a while, his new supervisor was supposed to take over. Um, but he said that that's gonna go back to the Department of Land Use Permitting. So it's a little bit, I don't know that there's anybody now in DPP who's actually familiar with or um you know, like has has really followed this project. And I don't know yet that it's been assigned to anybody. Um. But also just wanted to share the the sad news of the death, the death of um Zachary Stoddard. So.
Thank you. That's awful. I will find out who is assigned to this.
Thanks very much for that update. Any other questions or comments for Kim?
Chair, this is Andrew. Um, Rep. Garrett, could I ask a quick question of Ms. Farland?
Go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. Hey, Kim, thanks for the update and appreciate uh specifically the schedule regarding the work on Woodlawn Bridge and the stream there. Um, we've sent letters in the past to DFM on on behalf of residents in the Koali Road area. This is where Palolo and Manoa Streams converge kind of by uh Wai-Lai Avenue. On the back entrance to UH, that area is terribly overgrown as well, too. And I know that neighbors in that area are concerned about flooding from that. So could you ask DFM um if he might be able to tackle that area at some point, too? I totally understand that there's staff shortages and whatnot. And you only have a small crew to cover the whole island, but we'd appreciate it.
Well, and there's a chance if it's in that area, it might be in that same time. So I'll find out if they do have that scheduled. Yep.
Okay, yeah, this is probably a good two miles away from that Woodlawn site. It'd probably be a different job, but um, yeah, whatever you could find out for us. Thank you.
I can't imagine they go Manoa, Wyatt, and I, like, yeah, you know what I mean? They probably get some chunks along the way, so.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Happy to do so.
Thank you. And then, sorry, Chair, I'm actually on at Liuwei Airport right now about to board a plane back to Oahu. It was here on Koi for um visits for the House Finance Committee, so I'm gonna have to log off, but um, just if I could give a very quick report.
Yeah, go ahead.
Skipping the line here. Um, but yeah, just uh, you know, if you guys are gonna recess in December, now is a great time to reach out to our office for any ideas regarding legislation for the twenty twenty-four session. It's right around the corner. So um, I'm already working on bill packages. I've been talking to some community folks about things that they want us to uh push for next session. So um, I'll put my contact information in the chat box. And if anyone has any ideas um or questions or comments about things that they're hearing, um, by all means, please reach out to us. And then lastly, to Mr. Fox's question about the invasive grasses. Um, you know, I was in Lahaina last week uh for the first time since the wildfires. And we had a meeting with the Army Corps folks and, you know, it's just a terrible choice predicament they're in. Um, I don't think anyone wants to plant invasive grasses, but they did say their concern is, um, you know, they are expecting heavy rain events later this year. And if that contaminated soil, all of which which hasn't been treated yet, if that runs off into the ocean, the damage to the reef there is gonna be irreparable. So I think that's kind of the the caution bargain that they're dealing with. So just wanted to put that out there. Um, and that's, again, my understanding, not speaking on behalf of them officially or anything, but just wanted to add that in there. And that's in the chat box as well. So thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Representative, and have a have a good flight back to Oahu.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um. One more call. Last time, anybody else have any comments or questions for Kim? Hearing, seeing, not, oh, no, that's, that, no, we don't. All right. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you. I'll stick around.
Thank you. Uh, next we have City Councilmember Say Calvin.
Here, okay. And just let me start off by saying thank you very much for allowing me to say a few words this evening. I think Kim and Andrew did a great job in reporting the issues that we do face today at the county level. And my report is in the OneDrive link. At this time, uh I wanted Andrew and maybe Carol, if Carol's attending tonight's meeting, is to share with the residents and the board members the event that they have for this month in regards to the Neighborhood Security Watch Program. So Andrew, if you're hearing, why don't you just share with the residents what you and Carol are proposing for this month? Or is Carol there also?
Councilmember, I think I'll defer to Senator Fukunaga. I think her staff is on, if not her staff. Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Got it. Okay, other than that, uh it's been a busy month in regards to Manoa, in regards to residents calling us up about uh the DMV being disorganized, the resurfacing of Doe Street to University Avenue. The jurisdiction of something that's very interesting that we're researching right now, and that is a issue that occurred where some of our residents uh went to the part where the community gardens are, and you see the compost. They were using, taking the compost back home, and the residents were saying those composts belong to the gardeners that are using the community gardens. And that's where it's a jurisdictional issue that we're trying to research also and resolve. Then we have the area of Lower Manoa, which is the Atherton Road parking issue. Uh, then the Manoa Gardens residents were concerned about the management of the operations of Manoa Gardens, which we have contacted the department. And then finally, our MPI traffic congestion issue that we are trying to work it out with the residents in the school itself. So those are some of my report. And finally, a report that I just got today. And I'm happy that Andrew is on because he deals with the Pohua Ridge, not Pohua Ridge, but the Kalei Road construction of a monster home. And this is the response we got from the department. They have, they have conformed to the law by reducing the square footage of living area. Revised plans submitted by the violators have been reviewed and approved by our department. To achieve this, the garage area was increased, thus decreasing the adjacent living areas. The reduced floor area ratio, FAR, complies with the state land, with the county land use ordinance. A site visit was conducted on the morning of ten thirty of twenty twenty-three. Upon field verification, the building permit revised was reinstated and returned to inspection in progress. Notice of the violations were corrected, and the stop-work order was lifted. They were authorized at that point in time to resume work. So this particular issue was addressed to some of our residents of uh Kalei Road, and this is, they thought it was a monster home, which was. And they have been asked to revise their plans, which they have. So I'm happy to uh share that with the board and with uh, this is basically uh Patty. If Patty's on tonight, go on. Okay? Other than that, I think Kim did a great job in sharing with all of you the issues that we were facing today and the response. For Mr. Liu and Mr. Clyde, and my staff, whoops. Unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, did you read the request that you made last month? And that was in regards to what is a definition of affordable housing. And my staff, Brandon, was supposed to be responsible in responding to your concerns. So I hope he did at this point in time. If not, we'll follow up once more. And I'm happy to report that we have another new employee because Brandon Sekia left, and it's a Pua. Pua, who is with the the office that I'm working at right now. Okay?
Okay, thank you for that.
Call honey. Call honey. Smith, call honey.
Okay.
Hi, councilmember Say, this is Judy, but we did get the information from Mr. Newman. The affordable definition is the median income is at one hundred twenty thousand for two persons. And for it's six, for the sixty to eighty percent of median, it's about seventy thousand to seventy to seventy-five thousand dollars. So we did get the information.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Judy. Uh, at this time, I'll be happy to answer any questions that the board members may have or residents.
Can I say something or put my hand up? Sorry.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Okay, well, my concern is more
Wait, I'm sorry.
Can you can you hear me?
We can hear you, but I gotta call on members of the board first. Patty?
Well, I'm a member of the board.
Oh, wait, are you? Oh, my gosh. Sorry, I'm sorry.
Patty is a member of the board.
My gosh. My bad. I'm sorry. That's that's not my that. I do apologize for that. I'm going to recognize you first, Patty, if you don't mind waiting a little bit. Thanks, Patty. Go ahead.
Okay, my concern is that. People that live in affordable housing. They typically get their rent increased every year based on some formula. And. It doesn't really necessarily keep up with the cost of with the cost of living or fixed income increases. You know, homeowner doesn't have increases every year, and that's why homeowners actually make money. So the only people that make money are the investors and renters are continually kept. You know, from being able to use the extra. Saving, they don't get any savings from longevity. If they say they're there ten years, every year their rent goes up. Or as a homeowner, that doesn't, that's not so. So they they build equity. And anyway, I just have an issue with that.
Yeah, yes.
The renters. Don't get a real fair, equal treatment with the way that it the rent increases are set up. That's all I have. Thank you.
No, but Clyde, we did try to address it this year at the city council. But we could not give the renters a real property tax credit. The real property tax credit would probably just go to the landlord, who is the homeowner, and that is the problem.
Yeah.
I did voice my concern that another approach that we could take. But I don't want to put more pressures on the state legislature is that you could also do it by income, personal income taxes. You reflect in your income statement that you're paying twelve thousand dollars a year in rent, a thousand dollars a month. May that be part of the credit that they get back on their income tax. That is that something direct. So that's all I can share with you that the twelve thousand would be an expense on your income tax form to reflect that I paid that amount. And then, you know, the state would have to give them the opportunity of a refund or a tax credit on that particular twelve thousand. But for the property tax, if you're the landlord, you you are the beneficiary, not the renter.
True. I understand.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Clyde. Sorry about earlier. Your name texted me off as mad for some reason, so I can give you for a little bit. Oh, can you hear me now?
Barely.
Bye, Clyde. You hear, this is Calvin. What Robert is saying, your name that is shown on the screen is Mad. M A D. M A D.
That's me.
Sorry about that. Can you hear me better now?
Yeah, yeah, here you go. Yeah.
Okay, good, good, good. Patty, sorry, go ahead. Patty, you're muted. You're muted again. There you go.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Calvin. Thank you for. Your work on this, and I wanted to acknowledge that I did receive an email from Judy a little while ago, and I forwarded to the residents. And I know a few of them are on this meeting as well, but I just wanted to thank you that you helped you helped them with this issue.
Well, that's where I've been saying, and I said this today at the full council. We as a community have to be self policing ourselves in regards to neighbors that are, you know, abusing the land use ordinance laws or the zoning code laws. And it's up to us to report that to elected officials like Carol and Andrew and myself. So that we can go to the departments to see that they do the investigation and inspection. So it's not only just Manoa or lower part of Manoa. But St. Louis Heights, Palolo Valley, Willa Miller Rise, Kapo Hulu, et cetera, all over the county. You're correct.
Yep, thank you again.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anybody else from the board? Hearing, seeing that, moving on to members of the community, Brenda. Brenda? Brenda Lamb? Hello, Brenda?
Yeah, wait, I'm trying to unmute. Okay.
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay, I I just wanted to bring up or ask a question because the police department is not here. I've been very concerned. I live right on Manoa Road and there's so much speeding going on. I know it happens throughout Manoa, especially in the mornings and early afternoons from like three to five o'clock. And I don't ever see a policeman drive up and down the road with a blue light on to maybe. Inform drivers that there are police that might give them tickets. So I really wanted to bring it up to the police department since they're not there, bringing it up to Calvin and the mayor's office. Thank you.
Brenda, let me make a request to HPD if they could assign an officer to look at the area, but can you give us the time? That you believe the speeding has been occurring?
Yes, well, it's in the morning from seven thirty to eight, and especially in the afternoons from like. Three thirty to five thirty. I had an incident the other day. My grandkids were over and I live right on Manoa Road, a little bit by Triangle Park. They kicked the soccer ball across the street. And I had to run down and get the ball. I didn't cross the street, but nobody even slowed down when a kid's ball crossed the road. And nobody even slowed down to let me cross the street. And they were just, I mean, I hear this a lot. And at night, it's, you know, I know the police can't be there at night, but if they could just have a little bit of presence up here. And I know it happens in Woodlawn and all over Manoa. It's not just Manoa Road.
Correct. Okay.
I mean, should I call the police department myself or?
You may, you may, but let me follow up on your behalf.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I know that, sorry, this is Mayor's rep since. Ms. Lamb had mentioned me, you know, this was something that we had reported on last month as well. And I'm, I'm. It is hard. I mean, District Seven is a huge area, so the times are helpful so that we can start to hone in on those times and get get folks there. So thank you for that and thank you. Councilmember Say, so I'll I'll report that back. I understand that calling the police every time somebody's speeding and by the time the police get there, they're gone is just a vicious cycle of frustration. So I'm trying to. I don't think three one one is really going to be the right issue either, but at least it gets it into a system and you'll have a timestamp on it. And they can start to see trends. So it's not really the best solution. But like I said.
So not four one one, you call three one one?
Yeah, there's an app, there's an app on your phone called Honolulu Three One One. And so if you see a broken pipe, you know, and water's spouting out, or you see a pothole in a road, you can take pictures and you can report it through the app. And I, and again, this isn't the best solution, but being a person that wants data to make decisions, I think that this is a nice low. Low impact to you way to start putting into the system again, because you're going to start seeing. Times, you're going to see this is the road, this is the intersection, whatever you want to put in there. That can start seeing these coming in. And I can tell you when when the departments get these things coming in, you know, we we address them. We take this very seriously. We get. Reminders from the Managing Director's Office every month. Hey, you know, respond back to our constituents. And so. Again, not the most eloquent solution, just something I'm thinking of, but I'll I'll keep thinking it through.
Thank you.
Brenda, one more thing. This is Chair, this is the Chair again. At the last Neighborhood Board meeting, similar. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. Sorry, just wanted to confirm that. A similar topic was raised as well. And the police provided a phone number to report for District Seven in particular. As an outreach hotline for District Seven where we live. I'm trying to find that number now, but I can't seem to locate it. If any of the other neighbor board members could actually, it should have been on the text for the last meetings. And if anybody has that on hand, please save it into the chat for this meeting as well as that way. We can share that with Brenda and anybody else who has concerns for the police.
Great, thank you.
You, Mr. Fox?
Thank you. Mr. Say. I know you've been active regarding monster homes. There is monster home behind my house at twenty-three fifteen Miley Way. It was developed by a Chinese gentleman. Who had the kindness to come over to my house, delivered a bottle of wine with his quote unquote son and say. Welcome to, you know, I'm happy to be part of your neighborhood, blah, blah, blah. Little knowing that I speak fluent Chinese. Thank you very much. I listened to all of the construction that went on in that property. So I let it go for a number of years. This year, I have listened to the quote unquote tenants that come out of that property. And they're angry because the rents have soared, which I think Robert can understand. This is ridiculous. This is not a rental property. It was supposed to be for an extended family. They now have seventeen renters with seventeen bathrooms, seventeen washer and dryers, seventeen kitchens. Everything is an apartment building on Miley Way. Now, unless the city council wants to revise our zoning statute and say it's okay to build apartment buildings in the middle of a residential neighborhood, God bless you. But this is my complaint and it's complaint driven. I wrote to the DPP. I heard absolutely nothing. I don't expect to hear anything from the DPP because they're twenty-five people short. And they're probably overwhelmed at this particular point in time. However, as our council member, I would truly appreciate it if you would take this under advisement. And maybe cite this property for doing business in a residential. Area where they were not supposed to be doing business in the first place. P S, they cemented that entire lot. Every time it rains in Manoa. We get six inches of runoff from that property, which floods the other neighbors' yards and buildings. This is just, it's all the horror stories that you've heard about monster homes and it's just there.
Okay.
On and aside.
Yes.
For rental property, I am a real estate broker and I own properties both here in California, in California and here in Hawaii. The problem is a state issue. It's not a city council issue. If you want to give tenants a credit. Then I would suggest that the state increases the rental tax credit from sixty dollars to something higher than that. It seems sort of ludicrous to me that so many people paying so much rent only get to deduct sixty dollars off of their tax worth. So.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have you wrap it up because we do have a very busy schedule tonight.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Mr. Nakata?
Thank you, Chair. I have a question for Calvin Say, Mr. Say, regarding the. Monster home on Calais Road. My sister built her house next door. And about ten years ago. And she had the darnedest time just trying to get three bathrooms in when my parents' existing house had three and a half baths. My question is, if you say this house is in compliance, how many bathrooms does it have? I mean, it's so huge and why is it on two addresses? It used to be one address, but now they have two addresses there.
Miss Nakata Lee, I really don't know the answer. But I can go and check with the department and the inspector that did the inspection. I do have the name and I believe Patty also has a name, so we can contact. Mr. Fu Hardy tomorrow or Miss Leslie Fu Hardy.
Thank you very much.
No, no, and he's with the chief building. He's the chief building inspector of the building division of DPP. So, you know, Miss Nakata, if you could just give me the questions that you may have, the number of bathrooms, okay?
Because my understanding was you can only have as many bathrooms as was existing on the property. And they gave my sister a very difficult time getting three full baths when she already had that. And that home cannot be having only two, which is what the existing built two starry house our neighbor had. So I just am questioning. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
The next question, Mrs. Nakata, you said there was a combining of two properties.
Well, it seems to have two addresses there. It used to be only one. So I'm saying, is that two houses or one house? Because there's very little space in between two of them. And if it's two houses, I think. I don't know what the height, the requirement is between two houses, but it used to be ten feet. I think it's eight feet now. But it's very, it's very close. And just yesterday, they looked like they were doing something to remove something between the two houses.
Got it. I'll follow up on this for you also. Okay?
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. And then can we get your email address or how can I get ahold of you?
I'll give it to Patty.
Patty, okay.
Patty can send it to you. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Very much. Whitney?
Thank you, Chair. One more thing for Ms. Barland's plate, I guess, since she sort of volunteered. Is she still here? I don't see her. Oh, thank you. Just hopping on Brenda's comment, I was going to say this to the police representative, but since they're not there and you already offered to give one message. I have heard a number of nights, I'm kind of a night owl, maybe eleven, twelve, one o'clock in the morning. Somebody's speeding. It might be two. It sounds like mopeds. I mean, to a sort of. Extraordinary degree, it seems to me throughout the, it seems they've, they repeatedly do a like loop around the valley. It usually sounds like they start on the Tanila side. And then they might even go further into Palolo or something or Kamaki. But it's, they like are just joyriding. I think they they like start at the end, they come all the way back, they go. Out and then they come all the way back in and out. They, I think, are just doing sort of like the main drags, you know, Manoa, East Manoa, Woodlawn. And it tends to be really late at night, but. Based on the sound of it, they're going incredibly fast. I don't know if anybody else has heard this, but. It's it's a pretty frequent thing. Like I heard it four or five nights in a row where they were doing this. So if if they're going to keep this on note. It just seems, yeah, to be an extremely fast speed that they're going at. And also very, very loud. It's like, I don't know, they did something to their moped to make it extra loud. I don't know what. But so possibly easier to catch them. Thank you.
Sure. No, absolutely. I live near the H one freeway, so we get the same thing between ten and one. Kind of those straightaways, so.
I feel you.
Uh, thank you very much. Anybody else for councilmember Say? Hearing, seeing, none. Councilmember, thank you very much.
Thank you very much to all of you.
Will you be staying on for the Paradise Park discussion as well later on?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. Moving on to anybody from Senator Fukunaga or Senator Fukunaga, are you here?
Hi, Alec Iketa. I'm here on behalf of Senator Fukunaga.
Go ahead.
I just have two announcements. The first is that Senator Fukunaga, along with. Representative Garrett and Councilmember Say will be hosting a Neighborhood Security Watch Coordinators and Block Captains Meeting. This will be on Wednesday, November fifteenth, from six to eight P M. At the Manoa Elementary School Cafeteria. If you have any questions, you can contact Senator Fukunaga. Her email I put in the chat. Senator Fukunaga at capital dot boy dot gov or Tersha Ku. Her email I will also be putting in the chat is t dot ku at capital dot boy dot gov. So that is again on Wednesday, November fifteenth at Manoa Elementary School. It's a Neighborhood Security Watch Meeting. Just to discuss, you know, safety issues in the community. And my second announcement is that I have also posted in the chat a link to Senator's November. Update or report to Neighborhood Board. Just briefly, we mentioned an issue in Manoa Stream with blockages that we're trying to help a constituent resolve. And yeah, that's, that's it for the report. And if you have any questions, you can email the Senator, send Fukunaga at capital dot boy dot gov. Myself, a period Iketa, a dot I K E D A at capital dot boy dot gov, which I will put in the chat. And yeah, if you have any questions, I will be online for it to answer them, but that's the right guy.
Great, thank you very much. Is there anybody who would like to? Great. Thank you very much. Uh, is there anybody who would like to ask questions to Senator Fukunaga as representative? No members of the board, no members in the community. Thank you very much.
Actually, um, I have one for, um, um, Alec, which was, uh, we appreciated the, um, efforts of Senator Fukunaga last, earlier this year during the session to introduce legislation calling for, um, you know, a requirement for an EIS for any proposals for two O and H development on preservation zone land. And it was, it didn't pass, but I would appreciate if she'd consider reintroducing it again in the upcoming session. And, uh, I believe that was coordinated with, um, with Andrew Garrett's office also. So anyway, just wanted to put that out. Thank you.
I write, yeah, we're currently, um, looking at, um, you know, legislation that we're gonna be introducing. And so I will pass that, um, message along to the Senator and, um, hopefully we'll have something, um, an update for you on that at the next Neighborhood Board meeting.
Okay, mahalo.
Very much. Uh, I don't see or see anybody else. Alec, thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you very much, Chair, and thank you, members of the board.
So Representative Garrett already went, so moving on, Elmer?
Hello, Chair, hello, members. Elmer Kai, University of Hawaii. Um, thank you for allowing me to miss last month. I have family members actually from Lahaina, so from time to time I have to fly out to them to Koko. So that's what happened. I flew that, that evening and came back the next day. Let me give you a, a report, uh, facilities update. As you know, we are broke ground on the new graduate, uh, graduate housing that's on Doe Street. And construction opened, have started in October. The completion date is target for fall twenty-twenty-five. Um, this is the P, what we call a P-three project, a private partner partnership. Um, and this is a unique one in, in that it's, uh, the facility will have a lot of different components to it, childcare, vending spots and so on. But because of the private partnership, um, we had external financing to kind of do the project. Um, but it will be operated by the UH students, the graduate students, so they will run it, run it. Bachman Hall, um, people started to move in this month. We will have it finally ready in December, in, in December. So you'll see that facility, the fencing be start coming down shortly. Um, the student success center, which is a Sinclair library. Um, I, we had a lot of concerns about the fencing around there, the black carpet. Just want to let people know, we actually are, uh, certifying a, a contract with a native Hawaiian artist that has done several others to make sure that there is a design, because it does look kind of awkward, um, being there. Um, in that particular one, it's, again, it's the old Sinclair library. Um, I do have my report in the chat. Um, also another one is about all the entry areas, um, forty years away. The entry from Ado and University, Miley Way and University, Doe, Doe and East West Center, um, lower campus by R-City Circle and lower campus as well as Wailei, um, Kalelei Road. We actually started to do some budgeting for that so we can beautify it and make sure it's, it looks better than it is. Um, and so, so that, an, another note, and this is just a, this is an FYI for all of you. November eleventh is our football game with Air Force. It's a celebration, it's gonna be a celebration to honor our military, um, veterans. Um, just to let you know, we will have three, um, three F-twenty-two Raptors flying over, um, Ching Field, um, around six P.M. right after the anthem. So just, just in case you hear somebody flying over, that will be our, our salute to our, our members. Um, outside of that chair, um, I'm open for questions.
Thank you very much. Uh, Patty?
Thank you, Chair. Hi, Elmer. Um, I just wanted to circle back to a question that I asked a while back about having a, a calendar of events. I know you, I think if I remember correctly, you said around December-ish. It was, should be ready and I just wanted to see if any status, because I know we don't have a meeting next month and I'm kind of anxious to see, um, if that's gonna happen or not, or if I should reach out to anybody else that, to expedite it. Because I do see, um, your new athletic director and even the president at a lot of games I attend, so I can always just kind of ask him if he wanted to.
Yes. So Patty, thank you for that question. Yes, our new athletic director, um, I did raise that question to him because it's a new, new format. And please, if you do see him, remind him, he's really amenable to the changes in that compared to the former athletic director. So if you have a chance, please remind him. I think it's a great idea, uh, to have it right in the front of our webpage so that you don't have to stroll through, open another page to find out what's happening on the lower campus. Yes, please do.
Okay, so, so does that mean it's not happening until later? I, I'm sorry, I didn't get what you're saying.
So.
Like, is there, is there an estimated?
The target was to do December. Um, but when Craig came in, he has not put that as a priority. So, yeah, but he does know it's on the radar. He does have other things that he's kind of working on right now. Um, but I will remind him, but if you get this, a chance to see Greg and David, please let them know.
Okay, so for now, we don't have a date then, is that correct?
Yeah.
We don't have like an estimated, okay. I'll, I'll, yeah, I'm sure I'll run into him one of these games and I'll.
Oh, yeah, you guys always.
I'll, I'll, I'll ask him. Um, but in the meantime, is it possible that maybe if you can email or if you're not the person to email me a list of events for the month, so I can notify that residence? I mean, that would be a great option until this whole thing can be settled.
I can do that, for sure.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. Aloha.
Thank you very much. Uh, David Jimokawa?
Hi, Elmer, um, thank you. Elmer, I just wanted to find out, uh, if the University of Hawaii has any thoughts regarding Bohola Ridge? Because the anticipated meeting by the HF-FDC is anticipated to be in November. Um, our comments to the university inquiries is not to seek the, uh, denial of, of the construction is to make sure that they build it right. Especially since, um, this can be a, a traffic impact, as you know. But also, um, as, as we communicated to the, to the university administration and the athletic department, that building, if allowed to grow to its full height of two hundred fifty feet, will have full view of both Morokami Stadium and the athletic field at TC Ching and even the soccer field. The geometry of the building is right in line with the athletic complex. So this, the question is, are we gonna allow the people there to have their tailgates? Add parking for the customers and visitors? Um, I have, have, uh, so you went, uh, what Jim Donovan used to say, a leakage of revenue from the athletic activities because people have full view of the athletic fields and games that go, that take place. So I just wanted to find out if you had anything from the administration.
Um, thank you, David, for the question. Yes, we are in, in constant communication with the developer uh, regarding all of that. I can't tell you what, what the details are. Um, simply because we, we have other concerns that is not what you have mentioned. Um, these are including traffic, um, and others. So yes, David, we are in negotiation. I don't have a position, we don't have a position yet until we get a final, um, um, EIS as well as, um, and planning of what they're gonna do. Right now, a lot of the discussion is being on what the, uh, po- potential concerns are, right? And, uh, we are aware of that. Uh, yeah, I can't, I can't tell you exactly what our position is right now. I can tell you though, we have big concerns regarding the traffic area in particular for now. Um, as for the others, I know we had discussions regarding the other things you talked about. I, I don't have an answer for that.
Okay. No, at least if there's ongoing discussions that we know that, yes. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Nakata?
Thank you, Chair. Hi, Elmer. This is Lydia. Hi, we still don't have that light up. I know you're a busy, very busy man. Who am I supposed to call to get that light fixture put up on that pole right outside of Halei?
We did, we did make a request for the Department of Trans. That's not ours.
Department of Trans?
Yeah, yeah, because that's a DOT light and that, because all of ours are within our property is working. Um, but the one that you talked about is really the part of the Department of Transportation. But we will constantly always ask them because we see the light is impacting, impacting traffic when in and out in the evenings. Yes.
Yes, it's very, very dark, even for the police to be standing there, even though they have all their players and everything. Okay, thank you very much.
Welcome.
Is there anybody else who has questions for Elmer at the University of Hawaii? Hearing, seeing none. Elmer, thank you. Hope, uh, is that agenda item that, um, we hopefully might, uh, be appreciate your input on? If we have time for it, I don't know how long they can stay with us, but if you can stay, I would appreciate it.
I'll stay.
Thanks. Uh, moving on to Governor, uh, Josh Green's representative. Francine, are you here? Francine? Seeing that she's not here, all right, first thing, uh, it's gonna probably take up a lot of time on the agenda next is the Paradise Park Resolution.
Chair, um, could, could you, uh, ask your forum first?
That's a good point, Dave. Thank you for, for catching me on that. Um, do we have forum Jackson?
Hey, Chair, this is, uh, Logan Hutchinson. I'm on, uh, Jackson's account. I believe that all ten board members are on. Just, uh, like I know Patty Kaye, I think is, um, a board member.
Can we do a roll call?
Yeah, absolutely. Vane?
Here.
Watson?
Here.
Basel?
Here.
Nagaji?
Here.
Fukamoto?
Here.
Lumen?
Here, sorry.
Thank you. Lee? Lee? Is this, is this not a Phil Lee here that I'm seeing on the screen?
He's here, but his mic's muted.
Bill, are you there? Just keep going.
Unmute yourself.
Bill, you gotta unmute yourself. Phil and Lee, hello? Member Lee?
I don't think you can hear us, Chair. Cough?
I'm here.
Chong?
Here.
Kawano?
Here.
Yeah, everyone, everyone's here, Chair, all ten members.
Okay. Thank you for that. So in which case, we will be moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is the, uh, resolution. Um, is any member from the board able to speak and, uh, regarding this issue?
Yes, Chair, um, I have the resolution, um, which I'm able to screen share. And also, I, I did request to have it put on the agenda so I can, uh, kick off the discussion if that's all right with you.
You go right ahead.
All right, so, um, in just a minute, I'm gonna share the, uh, resolution draft. Um, I will say real quick that I did receive the map that, uh, Member Watson sent through the NCO. And, um, when Member Watson talks about that, I'll be able to screen share that too, so I'll have the visual aid. Um, the other thing that I wanted to mention real quick is that I was, um, contacted by some commu- community members about the resolution. So just to be clear about, uh, my perspective on this, my interest is just in getting the, uh, road in back of the valley fixed up. I personally have a preference of whether it's state or city or someone else. But again, I'm just interested in getting the road fixed and based on the documents that I looked at, it does look like the city is rightful owner and should have the responsibility for fixing it. Uh, the other thing that they'll mention real quick is that one community member did contact me to share concerns that this, that this resolution or resolutions like it could lead to, um, commercialization of Paradise Park area and that, that part of the valley. I do think those are your concerns to have, since we have had attempts to commercialize parts of the valley in our recent history. But in the case of this particular resolution, I don't think that's what the resolution does. So if, um, there's members of the community who want to talk about specific commercialization concerns or in discussion, then I'd be interested in hearing that. But for the time being, I think the resolution is good, so I'm gonna go ahead with it. So a screen sharing now. Chair, can you see, can you, uh, see it okay?
So we can see it.
All right, um, the, the resolution and its supporting documents were sent to, to board members a couple of weeks in advance. But Chair, would you want me to, um, go through the whole resume and read it out loud just for the, for, uh, those who are watching? Or should, should I just skip past and summarizing it to the end?
Um, summarize each paragraph if you don't mind, just because of the time constraints, the, uh, the other issues on the agenda for tonight.
Okay, Chair, thanks. Um, so first paragraph is just talking about duties of the board and how it's, uh, within our purview to be talking about this. Next couple ones talk about how, um, this issue has been coming up recently. Um, in order to have talked about it, we have this, um, road in back of our valley that is in a state of disrepair and again, keeps coming up. Um, and then essentially it was through a, uh, CHAM documents that lay out the history of this road to, um, establish that currently it is owned by, um, the Seating County of Honolulu. So we, we have a document from, uh, nineteen oh four from Superintendent Public Works C.S. Holloway. Um, which, uh, talks about giving up the fifty-foot redaway to be used for construction. Then we have the, um, Not All the Heli Letter dated from June third, nineteen ninety-nine from DLNR Abstractors Doris Moana Roland, which, um, says that this portion of the law, uh, placed ownership and jurisdiction of the road within the, uh, Seating County of Honolulu. Then a letter from, uh, May second, two thousand and seven by Rushmore LLP on behalf of the State of Bernice Pawhee Bishop, also in his community schools, which states that, um, this portion of a no road is a public highway. Uh, community, mea schools chaos is not responsible for the road and will not take any action as to the road or conditions on the property. Next, um, a document that's dated from, uh, June twelfth, two thousand and seven, explaining that public records show that the roadway is a government road and that the abut, abutting private property owners, including the church, have no obligation to maintain it. Again, because it's in the, uh, possession of the city or possibly the state rather than the church, uh, who would be liable if it needed to be repaired. Then we have another document, this one DLNR later dated September eighteenth, two thousand and eight, from Chairperson Lord Thielin, which says that the Manoa Road terminates past Paradise Park and at the formal entrance to the Lynar Breedom and the trailhead to the Manoa Falls Trail. And that the research concluded that the road is in fact an old government road, but due to its vehicular use is not under, under the jurisdiction of DLNR and it is also not included on the master list of roads under the State Department of Transportation. And as such, is under jurisdiction of the Seating County of Honolulu. And that, um, road requests inquiry, road repair inquiries should therefore be directed to the Seating County, uh, government. Then we have a letter from September nineteenth, two thousand and eight, from DLNR Chairperson Lord Thielin. Uh, once again, saying that by operation of the. Uh once again, saying that by operation of this uh statute, uh the City and County of Honolulu owns that portion of Manoa Road. Next, um document from Attorney General's Office dated September twenty six twenty twelve. Um which explains that the findings of the shit abstractor can be under lies, uh analyzed under the law to determine whether the portion of Manoa Road is a public highway by implied dedication or operation of law. Then another, another document dated October seventeenth twenty twelve, layered to the AG's office by the abstractor, which states that in conclusion, they find that the city and county of Honolulu owns the subject portion of Manoa Road. Next document from December twenty twelve, from the state legislature's Manoa Row Task Force. Uh the task force's report is that the city is disputing ownership and the opinion of the tr- attorney general and the state abstractor of regarding road ownership. And the task force recommended to introduce legislation in the two thousand and thirteen regular session to designate the road as uh belonging to the city. Uh then we have Act two oh eight fr- from July twelfth twen- twenty seventeen in which um Governor David Ega summarized that the bill provides a disputed road may be transferred ownership to a county as directed by the State Department of Transportation. And then we have this uh deed registered with the State of Hawaii Bureau of Conveniences, uh which exempts that a one point three acre more or less uh section of road from uh being transferred. So that, that's some summary of the whereas uh statements and then we come to the beat resolved portion, which is beat resolved. That the Manoa Navy Board Number Seven urges the City and County of Honolulu Administration to finally officially accept responsibility for the end Malca portion of Manoa Road above Wa Akau Street leading past Paradise Park up to UH Line Arboretum and ending at the trailhead of Manoa Falls Trail. And have the Department of Transportation Services, Department of Facility Maintenance and Department of Design and Construction begin needed maintenance as soon as possible to bring the road up to acceptable standards and continue to maintain it in perpetuity for the safety and benefit of the community members and visitors to the area. And then the final paragraph beat resolved also that copies of this resolution be sent to Mayor Ric Blangiardi, Managing Director Michael Formby, a DTS Director Roger Morton, DFM Director Jean Albano, DDC Director Hakum Illes, the nine members of the City Council, Corporation Counsel for the City, uh Governor Josh Green, Lieutenant Governor Sylvia Luke, all members of the state legislature, DLNR Chairperson Don S Chang, Attorney General Ann Lopez, DOT Director Ed Sniffin and the surrounding stakeholders which are UH Line Arboretum, the Miami Schools Bishop Estate, DLNR, um Not Allah Helle, Paradise Park and the Board of Water Supply. So I'm gonna stop screen sharing now so we can uh see everyone in the gallery, but let me know if you want me to uh reshare it.
Thank you very much. Do we have any comments or questions from members of the board regarding uh the re- the proposed resolution?
I have a question. Um is there a motion made? There needs to be a motion and a second and then discussion.
Uh I so move to um approve this uh resolution.
Do we have a second?
I seconded.
Member Lee seconded. Thank you very much. Ellen, thanks for correcting me on that. I seem to be off my game tonight. Um is there anybody who would like to make discussions on this subject? Ellen?
Yes, thank you. What's the echo? No, no, Filmon, you're on the screen twice, so you might be echoing. You logged on twice, anyway.
There we go. That should've worked out.
Anyway, um I cannot support this resolution and let me tell you why. I can't support the resolution because it cites documents from nineteen oh four all the way up different legislators' opinions and different people's opinions. This has been a contested issue for a long time and the most recent that I recall, uh the twenty fourteen then Rep Isaac Choi um wanted this resolved and it has not been able to become up resolved. The city consistently says to all of these things that it does not own the road. And the last time this came up was in twenty eighteen nineteen at a Manoa Neighborhood Board meeting. And Robert Cronin was then the Director of Design Construction and he consulted with um corporate counsel. And then he's the one that generated the map that showed the pre- three private owners of this road. And through all of the documents, even the ones that uh Dave Nagaji is referring to, um it talks about the right of public easement to this private road. So the public has use of this road because there's um a public easement. And anything other as far as ownership, it just comes down to an implied ownership. And I think the issue is not resolved and I think that the Manoa Neighborhood Board does not have the expertise, the legal expertise or not retrained attorneys. So we cannot issue a resolution that basically yells at the city and says, alright already, you own it. Here's this cadre of documents from nineteen oh four, now suck it up and fix the potholes. That is not what we should do and it's like a resolution that yells at the city. Um and I think that there, there needs to be some kind of a land court or some kind of adjudication about this. And in the Kamiya Maia Bishop Estate letter, it said if they were gonna have to maintain this road, they would file suit, right? Well, they certainly have the money to file suit, but they certainly didn't file the suit. So it's never gone to a land court or a judge to determine. It's just a cadre of opinions and even the state legislative's task force didn't come to a definitive conclusion, so you know, I just think that it is not a decided issue and it needs to be, it's a legal issue and it needs to be decided in a court of law or some kind of judge or land court or something rather than a whole bunch of people's opinions and certainly not the opinion of the Manoa Neighborhood Board to decide that the city and county is responsible for this because if so, um it will cost millions of dollars to bring it up, to, to bring it to code. It is my understanding from twenty fourteen, uh when Rep Choi was our rep that was concerned about this issue, they have to move utility lines. They have to move all kinds of stuff. Look at what has happened with rail, with moving utility lines. The city doesn't have the millions of dollars to do this. And so th- they would own, they would have to get the money from the state, so you know, the city just raises money from property taxes. We all don't want our property taxes to triple to try to deal with this road. So I think um, I think we're out of place and we're off base. And I think we can pass a simple resolution that says this issue needs to be resolved because we can clearly all agree that the road is in disrepair and has potholes and stuff. And it needs to be resolved um in some kind of a legal format. But the neighborhood board cannot be the judge and jury of this and say, therefore, we looked at all these documents and you own it, city, so hell, do it, you know? I don't think we can say that, so in that regard, I can't support the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh Elton? Elton? Elton, you're muted still.
Thank you very much, Chair. I was muted. Uh I'm going to say pretty much what Member Watson has already said. I'll say it in a different way. I appreciate uh Member Nagaji. Member Nagaji and I represent the same sub-district. The sub-district that has Paradise Park in it. So these are our constituents and I'm sure uh certain people have been contacting Member Nagaji to say, hey, we've got to take care of those potholes. I think this resolution, however, is far too ambitious. And so I'll be voting against it for three reasons. Number one, we are not a court of law and we cannot, we cannot be making legal conclusions or legal determinations. So in the first paragraph, uh Member Nagaji says, well, we can uh weigh in on, on issues of general, um general interest. But uh nothing in the neighborhood plan allows us to make legal decisions. And a legal decision is required here because we have documents from two thousand and eight, from two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen, all of them saying, hey, the state owns this and therefore uh we can pass this along to the city, so the city has responsibility. The problem with that is that the, i- i- it's pretty clearly implied that the city does not agree. And uh that's there actually on page two. When uh the task force states, quote, the city is disputing ownership and the opinion of the state attorney general and state abstractor. In other words, the city does not think it owns uh this. Instead, they believe that the three private uh owners own it. And all that is reflected in the map that Member Watson received from the Director of Design and Construction, Robert Cronin, indicating that there are three private owners and that from the city's point of view, they're uh they, they are the proper owners of this piece of um road. And therefore, it's not the place of this board to be making a kind of legal determination that is best made by a land court or by an actual judge who is empowered to make legal decisions of that sort. So this is not a resolution that can be decided by this board. Number two, even if for the sake of argument, we were deciding this, we're only hearing one side. So the basic principles of American law, which have an adversarial system, say that the two conflicting parties get to have their day in court. Uh on, on this resolution, there's only material from one side and not from the other. So that's fundamentally unfair and we have to also hear from the city. The third thing is that the resolution is really not uh equipped to make the kinds of conclusions we are. So for example, the entire factual part of this is related to legal issue. But, but nothing, there's nothing in the resolution about what kind of maintenance. Is it just filling potholes or we, do we need to have a, a more thorough uh redesign of the road uh with um curbs and sidewalks? How much is that going to cost? Um all of that is not in the resolution, so when we ask for something, we should be, we should be uh aware of how much we're asking the city, how, what is it gonna cost and, and what's required, what kind of design is required? And so I, I find that this resolution, although well-intentioned, is probably too ambitious for us at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Elton. Member Bosel?
Thank you, Chair. Um I guess I have a question if Kim and Calvin are both still on. Um or just if anybody is knowledgeable about this and can speak to whether or not there's anything that precludes the city from uh repairing the potholes on the road without determining who legally owns it. I assume this has, you know, in the past been repaired and whether, you know, according to the map, I think the area that's the worst um, you know, affected is, is what is owned by the um Kamiya Maia Schools, right? Um or maybe, you know, maybe there are multiple parties, but is there anything that would preclude the city from undertaking those repairs without determining or, you know, laying claim to the property in perpetuity?
I cannot cite um rules or ordinance that says so, but in practice, um a government does not step in and take care of something without being asked, right? So whoever owns it would have to say, hey, we really need your help. We're gonna waive liability, indemnify, all this kind of stuff that's gonna go into that. Because can you imagine the city going in and filling a pothole and then somebody's farf gets damaged, you know, and, and, and all, all of that stuff. So I can't cite one. I'm happy to look into this a little bit further. Um but I, I suspect even if it's not something in writing, it's not something in practice that's gonna be done.
I, yeah, thank you. Thank you for speaking that. I don't mean um, you know, without permission or just taking it upon themselves, but rather if there is you know, somebody, sorry, I'm hearing some uh um, if there is this right of way that I think was you know, spoken to there, I assume that's like a city right of way. So again, if the city could contact the owners and undertake this, that would seem to me to get around the issue. You know, the, the main issue seems to be the, the potholes, right? The, the massive amount of potholes along the road. You
Question too.
Sorry?
I thought ownership was a question too.
I think ownership is certainly the subject, it seems, of this resolution. I didn't, you know, I was not a part of drafting it, but it seems to me uh the subject of the resolution, rather for the aim of getting the road repaired. That seems to be the end goal um that I, that as far as I can tell, I've heard, you know, concern from community members for the state of the road. And it's, this resolution is trying to get ownership uh determined in order to get those repairs made. And I'm just wondering if we can get those repairs made without doing that. Is it possible? I guess I would say that the uh addendum to my question would be uh you know, council member Say and Ms. Barland, if you guys could reach out to Kamiya Maia Schools and uh I al- I already forgot with that map, you know, the other two owners of the portions of the road and just get five people, you know, whoever it needs to be in a meeting in a meeting, even if it's just a Zoom call and say, can we undertake pothole repairs?
Uh may I respond? Uh Jer- Jersey? What, what's happening today? Yeah, what's happening today is simply that uh I did make a request, Whitney, to the Corporation Council to look into it at this point in time. It's been almost twenty something years that this issue has been before the board and other residents of Manoa. And one of our ordinances that we do have in the City and County of Honolulu, Whitney, if you were to donate your road, your road would have to be up to county standards. Sidewalk, stormwater drain systems, et cetera. A bigger pardon? Unmute yourself.
Sorry, did you say if you're gonna donate your road?
Uh no, no, I'm saying if you were to uh convey the road to the city, we have an ordinance on the books that states for the record that that road has to be up to county standards. Sidewalks, storm drains, et cetera. There is no pad on both side of that road at this point in time. There's just a drop if you look at the Paradise Park side. And on the left side going to the uh valley, yeah, you do have some of these I would say foundations of uh land that we, they have, but the point is, at this point, I can share with all of you that we did make a request to Corporation Council. And the other point I'd like to make as an example is that there is a Hawaii revised statute that roads in limbo, roads in limbo that no one wants ownership. The State Department of Transportation will have to make a decision. And that's how, you know, it was adopted by the state legislature, but that would be an unfunded mandate.
Sorry, um ca- council member, you'll have to make a decision as to who will end up with the legal responsibility for it?
Correct. And we've been saying, if we do convey it to the city, Whitney, we want it up to county standards on behalf of the residents of Oahu.
Certainly. I was not, I was trying to circumvent this whole issue of conveying it and more seeing whether um acting as a right of way, you know, you could work to under, to repair some of the potholes, you know, the city as a right of way without getting into, you know, with the, with the owner's permission, without getting into changing or finally assigning ownership.
I, I truly feel and maybe the old timers on the board would know that I believe the city has tried to maintain the road, but on a superficial basis. Just filling the potholes, that's it. But don't expect the potholes to be fixed every year or, you know, doing a major resurfacing. That like what we see on the H one freeway. That's what I'm saying. The, you got it as far as uh.
I I do have it, yes.
And I get, I get this, I get the spirit. Unfortunately, like I said, the government such as could come in and and do it. Kamehameha Schools, whoever is deemed the owner, which is the question, right? Who's the owner to say, hey, look, we need help? Let's say the city doesn't want to do it, but there's all these other legal agreements that would then have to go into place. And if we can't figure out who has the rights. To ask who has the rights to offer. Then who's gonna sign those documents? And I don't mean to get like super wonky. But that's my, that's my world. But. Point taken. We will circle back. I'll also follow up a corporate council. We'll see what we can do to move forward.
Sounds good. I would say if you can get everybody on.
On board.
Um, okay, Whitney, I think your bike muted.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Um. Sounds good. I think um, you know, always getting all the parties involved on a single call rather than email chains is usually. The best route to getting the least confusion and the fastest results.
Joan?
Yes, I I'm thinking that the the intention of this is very uh, wonderful. To really start moving forward and just trying to get some. Uh, uh, some uh, authority to to get get this road under control. However, I think as a board, what we need from from uh, Calvin say and from the city as well. Is some guidance as to what can we write to you that will advance our cause? What kind of a? Uh, if we were to pass a resolution, how how would we, you know? What would we be asking for exactly, you know? Uh, because I I agree that we are not in a position to make the, it's uh, it's like a title search. You know, we're not in a position to do that. Uh, as board members, but yet we are as a voice trying to say, please fix this road for us. How do we get there? So that's my question. Would would either of you like to say, um, uh, Calvin say or Kim?
I'd like to do one to respond to that.
I will consult with our attorneys.
Yeah, but Joan, I would, I would just say this, this issue has been, you know, on the table for a great number of years.
Yes.
With Isaac Joy being there before, he tried to address it. And it was very difficult to address. And maybe I I think what Whitney is saying, what you're saying, Joan, is the right approach to take. That all parties come together, but let us wait to see what the corporation council says also. Because I would say that the corporation council would take the position of what they've had in the past. That is the private road of the three private landowners.
So then. Uh.
Unmute yourself, Joan.
Oh, Joan, you're muted.
Oh.
Nope, I'm done. Nope, you unmute.
There you go. No, you're still muted.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay, uh, maybe we can address then the private landowners as a group. And just say, please meet in the sa- spirit of trying to resolve this thing and and try to move forward. You know, just anything as that we can do as a board. I think that's what you're hearing from us. We just don't really have the tools to figure out exactly how to move forward.
And we'll try our best in the spirit of compromise. You're right.
Thank you.
Yeah, and if there has to be an MOA between all parties, because nobody can figure it out just. As a short term, you know, that's something that we can talk with the attorneys about too. What would that look like? Um, of course, we'd have to go back to council member say for some funding for this. Um, that, you know, there's, there's pieces.
There's the safety, you know, a lot of people trans uh, are are on that road, a lot of hikers and so forth, a lot of tourists. And and local people as well. And so it's a very heavily uh, foot traffic and vehicle road. So if you're getting people getting injured and hurt up there, it's not gonna save the city any money in the long run. Nobody's gonna save money, you know? Thank you.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Okay, Robert, thank you.
You. Uh, looks like uh, Jolyn, go ahead.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate the discussion and um, the. Language in the resolution. Um, I. However. I'm concerned as a community member, I'm concerned. Um, many of us stood against uh, the. Reopening and. Um, commercial, commercial development of that land. Um, in the maybe twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen period. Um. It seems to me that, I mean, nobody disputes that the. The street has a lot of holes, potholes. However, without a pledge or some kind of plan for that land. It seems premature to be. Making a nice road there. It recall. It recalls in my mind. The situation where the pro-development family was. Or their agents were talking to uh, members, uh, residents who lived. At the end of that road and saying that, oh, wouldn't you like to have no parking on this? Parking by others and. I objected and others objected because that would make it a really nice road. For bus traffic and other things. And so. I question. Whether we shouldn't look at it with some kind of pledge for the land or like, you know, state. Um, forest reserve kind of uh, situation in place. And making that. Uh. A prerequisite for looking at that. Street. Being. Um, improved. Because honestly, the fact that the street has been so awful. Is one reason why. Commercialization, commercialization hasn't happened more quickly there. And so as a resident, a third generation resident. I want to bring that up too. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh. So. Just so. Because of the time and this, and it's already eight thirty seven. Um. I'm gonna recognize member Nagaji. But then because we already have multiple people who, members of the board who said that they would not vote for this bill. And considering the number of members of the board and we need essentially everybody voting yes to approve it, uh, this agenda item. This motion is, the motion to approve this res- to this resolution is essentially dead at this point. I'll just leave it at that. Uh, Dave, I'm gonna let you talk and I'm gonna close discussion on this issue.
Thank you, Chair. I was going to suggest much the same thing. Um. I do think the road at the back of the valley. Is something we ought to talk about more at some point, but it's uh, clear that the resolution as written. Isn't ready for prime time and we don't have the time to uh. Do the heavy edits that we'd need to um. Potentially be viable, so. Um. I'm gonna keep my eyes on this issue. I'm I'm gonna see what the um, corporation council says to um. Councilman says requests, but I would like to withdraw the motion for the uh, reso.
The withdrawal does not need a second because he was the one who initially put it forward. In which case the mo- the motion is withdrawn and we can move on to the next agenda item, which. Um, I, Whitney, I do see your hand raised. I'm sorry, but because the time constraints. Come on, we we really need to do this as an agenda items. I'm really sorry, Whitney. Um. If anything, please coordinate with members, uh, council member say, as well as Kim at the mayor's office to be able to. Um, get the ball rolling and try to figure out how we could tackle this issue more effectively. I think it's the end of, is the point of the, the end of the discussion over here. I'm sorry, Whitney. Um. Next on the agenda item is going to be. Uh. Yes.
Yeah, hi, this is uh, the neighborhood assistant. Um, so I know Dave did withdraw his motion. We also need um, member Lumen to withdraw his second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um.
I withdraw my second.
Sorry, thank you for correcting us on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to the next item on the agenda at this point. Which will be the presentation. Is anybody here? Regarding. Can you speak to that? Hello? Hello?
Hi, Chair Zane. Are we doing the Mid Pacific presentation at this time? Sorry, I got caught out. Okay, so yes, I I will be starting our presentation.
And this is.
Um, I will introduce myself. Aloha. I am Melissa Moniz, serving as Director of Marketing and Strategic Communications at Mid Pacific. We deeply appreciate the opportunity to be part of your neighborhood board meeting today. Where we aim to provide an initial introduction to our forthcoming improvement plans. Mid Pacific will be submitting a request for a conditional use permit minor modification. With the Department of Planning and Permitting. No official presentations or approvals are required. Thus, we are not formally requesting a vote or approval from the Manoa Neighborhood Board this evening. However, we have requested to present because we believe it is our responsibility as members of the Manoa community. To share our planned improvements. Today's presentation will offer an overview of these plans. Mid Pacific is a vibrant community that serves to provide an exceptional educational experience for our students and families. Mid Pacific launched a comprehensive campaign to fund projects that were identified as priorities for the school. This includes a new track and field facility, enhancements to Wailele Spring and the rebuild of Bingham Hall. These improvements are not intended to increase student capacity. Rather, they are geared geared towards replacing current infrastructure and enhancing the value of our facilities. Allow me to introduce Kevin Lu Chan of G seventy, the design firm we have partnered with for these improvements.
Thanks, Melissa and Aloha Manoa Neighborhood Board and members of the community. Um, as Melissa mentioned, my name is Kevin Lu Chan and I am an architect and project manager at. G seventy and a proud Mid Pacific alumnus. As Melissa mentioned previously, we are in the early stages of design for improvements on the Mid Pacific campus. These include a new track and field facility, enhancements to Wailele Spring and the replacement of Bingham Hall. And today, we're gonna take you through a brief description of these proposed improvements, which are intend to improve and provide more resources for Mid Pacific students. The proposed improvements will occur in the central portion of campus nearest the property line with the University of Hawaii that you see here. The first improvement revolves around the current athletic field, where a track and field facility will be added around the current soccer field nearest Mills Gymnasium. Mid Pacific's new track and field facility will consist of a six lane synthetic surface track. And a naturally grassed field area that can accommodate track and field events, soccer matches and various other activities. One notable feature of this design is the continued use of natural grass. Which is not only safer for student athletes, but will also serve as overflow parking space during events on campus. While Mid Pacific may not host as many meets due to its smaller track size, six lanes compared to eight lanes at other private schools. Having a fourth option for the ILH will be a welcome relief for all schools involved. One thing that we do want to note is that due to the track, the size of the track. Mid Pacific will not be able to host larger events such as a state championship playoffs. These large events will still primarily take place at schools with eight lane tracks. In addition, Mid Pacific would like to revitalize Wailele Spring, which is a natural freshwater spring on campus. The revitalization of Wailele Spring proposes to restore and celebrate its cultural significance. While also making it a valuable educational resource. The second improvement revolves around the rebuilding of Bingham Hall. Bingham Hall was constructed as a part of the middle school quad in nineteen fifty-three. It has since aged past twenty-first century learning programs and is no longer a conducive environment to project-based learning. Mid Pacific's vision for this new building is to create open, flexible and learner-centered spaces. That the rebuild of Bingham Hall represents a significant step towards enhancing the middle school and high school experience at Mid Pacific. And will properly prepare students to excel and thrive in the twenty-first century. Thanks, everyone. I'm Melissa. I'm gonna hand it back to you to wrap up the presentation.
Thank you, Kevin. These improvement projects are currently in the very early stages of design. Um, so we anticipate construction to commence in the summer of twenty twenty-five, so there's still a lot of exciting work ahead of us. We look forward to the positive impact these fa- the, we look forward to the positive impact these facilities will have on the Mid Pacific community. With our student experience, sports programs and even the rest of our island community. Um, on behalf of Mid Pacific and G seventy, we'd like to thank you again for allowing us time to share our project plans. Thank you.
You very much. Uh, are there any comments or questions for members of the board? Hearing and seeing none. Do I have any comments or questions for members of the community? I don't see any. Um, real quickly, I do want to say, thank you so much for the heads up, giving us a lot of heads up considering the project's supposed to start up in twenty twenty-five. As a Mid Pacific alumnus myself as well, I really do appreciate the extra work and effort to improve the campus. And especially running around that field. In the mud and the rain, when it formed what I like to call the Great Lakes of Manoa on that field in the past. I think this will be a great improvement. Um, I'm hoping, I'm looking forward to. Your firm's work on this, um, and. Being good neighbors during the process when the construction is ongoing. Keep us updated. We really appreciate the heads up and um, looking forward to hearing more presentations from you in the future.
Thank you, Chair Zane. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Chair Zane.
Thank you.
Chair Zane, hello?
Oh.
Can you hear me?
Oh, sorry, who is this?
I'm a member of the community. I've been trying to get through without um, in-person. I guess meetings, it's hard for me to navigate this technology to be able to, I guess, add in my comments, so. I've been trying when you, as soon as you said, community input. Um, I do have a community input um, regarding mid pack development proposals.
Absolutely. Before you continue on, can you um, introduce your, uh, say your name for, um, just for the community, so we can know who's talking as well?
My name is June He.
Thank you, June.
Yes, um, I guess my question relates to the new facility that's gonna be put on, um, the track and field. I understand that they said that the natural grass would enable them to park on there for other events. However, where is the parking gonna be available for track and field events? Despite it not being able to host larger events. Um. As is the traffic caused by mid pack in our neighborhood streets. And taking up the parking, I guess. I'm hoping that they'll accommodate the parking on campus. Is there any plans to? I guess do so for these track meets?
Hi, June. Um, yes, I can start with that answer and what I may do is pass it off to um, our Director of Safety and Security. Brad Heatherly, who's also on the call here as well. So. As in regards to parking during track meets, um, we do intend to be able to fit everybody on campus during meets and. Just to kind of give you a reference point, um, and I can show you kind of a comparison with what that looks like with. What we currently host. So um, we currently host cross-country meets on our campus, right? And the biggest difference that I can tell you that when you compare the two, when you're, you're still looking at runners and families coming to campus from various schools, but. With cross-country, the biggest difference is be for the safety of students, we we're required to close off campus at a certain time. So once, once the track, the cross-country meet starts. We need to close campus and that, you know, and that's, that's different from track. Where for track meets, we wouldn't need to close campus at all because that would be confined to just the track and field facility. So it would actually create a better situation than, you know, than some of the other um, meets that we're already able to host on our campus. Um, Brad, do you want to add anything to that?
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now. Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair, and everybody, members of the community. My name is Brad Heatherly. I'm the Director of Safety and Security at Mid Pacific. To follow up with Melissa's answer to Ms. June, yes, the campus will be available for parking during regular track meets. And as Melissa explained, it is a different situation when it comes to cross-country. But to answer your question, Ms. June, yes, the campus will be available and open to parking during the track meets.
Well, my question is, will it be able to accommodate all the parking? Because we get undue overflow of mid-pack traffic as is, whether it's morning drop-off and/or afternoon pickup, which creates, creates a very dangerous hazard on a road, which is unregulated by mid-pack. Cars are, everyday mid-packs in session, going in the oncoming lanes to bypass the standstill of the traffic, and yet it's, the traffic is something out here that should be directed by a police officer, off-duty officer, or something, yet that has not happened. And if I understand, I guess that's one of the conditions for one of your street usage permits, that there is a off-duty officer.
In regards to the street uses permit that you have talked, that you're talking about, we've had, we have had special duty officers manning the traffic flow. So therefore, we have, we are in abance with the street use permit. They are not on the regular street, but they are directing traffic to continue the flow of traffic to alleviate the traffic congestion in the Manoa area. So we are in compliance, and I have been in contact with City DOT to make sure that we are in compliance with their measures and in regards to the permit. And going back to your initial question in regards to the track and field events, we, until that time comes, we are right now expecting to be able to accommodate all that parking on campus to try and make sure we do not congest the community, our Manoa community in that area. But until that time comes and for those events, those, that part, we will be continuing to look into as well as work with the community to make sure that we accommodate as much of the individuals and the families that do come to these events.
So my question is, where are these officers that are supposed, okay, so I guess there is a street use permit for street usage from Kaala Street, from University Avenue to the Mid Pacific main entrance. So both of those are contra-flow and no signage indicates when it is from. I was surprised when I went down and it indicates it's also contra-flow from two PM to four PM. And yet I looked at it during that time and that's not what you guys are doing. I didn't know the hours prior, but it's supposed to be contra-flowed, so both lanes go into your main gate from six to eight. There is no signage, and that's one of the requirements, that the signs have to be posted to inform, I guess, reflect the conditions set on the permit, which there is nothing to inform the community about this. So.
I'm getting contact. Go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead and finish.
Is that when it says special conditions and or restrictions, it says which special duty police officer for pedestrian traffic control, which the main traffic control, and I brought it to your mid-pack's attention over years now, is at Kaala Street, Kaala Way and Oahu Avenue, yet you're telling me that positioning personnel within your campus satisfies this conditional for the street usage permit? I don't think that's what the intent is, to just have personnel on top of your campus telling which way to go, left or right. I think it's meant to be on the residential streets to prevent the type of traffic that's happening.
June. I do apologize, but time is, time is going to be limited. I'm going to, I knew, I understand your concerns. This is getting off-topic of this issue, though. If Brad, if you, can you be available? Yeah, if you're going to be able to help out with June on this issue?
Yes, sir. Not a problem, sir.
Um, I've tried to deal with mid-pack for over three years now, and we have never gotten anywhere because they refuse to put personnel out to direct traffic or conduct, make traffic flow safely due to their traffic that they create.
Brad, if anything, we can also bring this issue on the agenda for another meeting. But at this time, I'm going to have to move on to the one, somebody else who had their hands up. Member Bolso, if you're still around, you had your hand raised earlier on this issue. Are you still there?
All good, never mind. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Whitney.
And then one last comment. Is there an environmental assessment for this new track and field on the impact of traffic? I think that's something that would be required.
Melissa? Oh, Kevin?
Yeah, can I, can I take that question and do we have Kovika McCaig, our Planning Principal, on the call?
Yep, Aloha Mike Kaku, Kovika McCaig, Planning Principal with G70. Thanks for the question. So the, the short answer is, we've already had a pre-op. Me with the Department of Planning and Permitting and, and long story short, it's their determination that for these new improvements to occur on site, we are only required for a minor modification to an existing conditional use permit minor. That goes back to twenty twelve. As we develop the plan forward with more detail, the minor modification application will include things like elevations of the new facility and analysis of how we adhere to development standards for this food self. And, and within that, we are required to look at the parking as well as traffic analysis as part of that application. So we will be doing that as part of the due diligence for that application. So no EA, just.
I just wanted to point out one thing. I just want to point out one last thing, final thing. I mean, I've been on the Neighborhood Board before, and in all the years, I have never seen mid-pack make any presentation to inform of any development. They've been there since, who knows, nineteen oh nine. And they started out as a two-to-three-story building dormitory school. And there are over thirty buildings there now. So I don't understand how they could have never approached the board before. I can't recall. Maybe they did, but I cannot recall any other time that they've been before the board to present about development. And it's just unprecedented growth. And if, you know, the excuses I've gotten from people who oppose me speaking out against this, who are telling me they've been here long before you have been, and they will be here long before, after you're gone. They will be here long after you're gone. If that's the philosophy, then things like Danyan Court with the cemetery, they should be allowed because they have more seniority over mid-pack. And, you know, Paradise Park too, they've been longtime organizations here in the valley. They should be, you know, allowed to do commercial activity and develop just as mid-pack has. You know, I don't understand. I've encountered a lot of walls because it deals with mid-pack and no one wants to speak out against them because they're afraid maybe that their kids won't get accepted. But I've even been accused that I have a vendetta because my kids have never been accepted. I never even applied them.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, June, you're out of line at this point. You're out of line at this point, June. I'm going to stop you there. I apologize, member, community members. Tom?
Uh, thank you, Chair. I just wish to note for the record as a longtime former Chair of the Manoa Neighborhood Board, that several of the comments just made by the speaker are absolutely incorrect. Mid Pacific Institute has come to, appeared before the board a number of times on different projects. So I just wish to set that one aside immediately. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Tom. I was about to make those same points myself, actually. Member Bolso?
Thanks, Chair. I was going to say the same thing. They have been here before, but I do think taking this as an opportunity, we have had other community members speak about issues related to traffic and wanting to speak to folks at mid-pack. I believe that at one point, a couple of us, you know, under two chairs ago, we're going to maybe try to speak to some folks at mid-pack. And so if there are some people from mid-pack, I forget if it's only G70 folks or mid-pack representatives here, I think it would be a good idea if the, like UH does, if there was somebody from, you know, the mid-pack community who came on regularly in order to be able to have more of a dialogue between the community members and the mid-pack, you know, community, that would be all, you know, a good thing to, to have more open lines of communication so that people feel they are able to get questions or comments back and forth. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Member Bolso. Brad, since you're here from Mid Pacific as well, keep that, hopefully we can have Mid Pacific on the agenda in the future. If somebody from Mid Pacific may be able to join us, make presentations or join us, like Elmore has with the University of Hawaii as well. Something to consider to Mid Pacific, if you don't mind.
No, I don't mind at all. I will have further discussions with Mid Pacific and my administrator. And we will hopefully be able to get back to you and make regular visits with you folks on a monthly basis.
Thank you very much. Anybody else have any questions or comments regarding the new development at Mid Pacific? Hearing and seeing none. Thank you very much again for your time, everybody, on that issue. We'll be moving on to the next agenda.
Chair, 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 sorry. Quick point of order. Um, I'd forgotten about this during the previous agenda item resolution, but on the agenda, the resolution was combined with the Paradise Park Working Group. And I, I remembered that we talked about the recipe, we didn't talk about the working group. So is there anyone here who is representing the working group who wanted to say anything about that?
Anybody? Hearing none. I'm.
Oh, hi, this is Melvia from Calvin Seitz's office. I see Calvin has left already.
Oh, Melvia, does Calvin Seitz's office need to say about the working group?
Um, yeah, if there was asked there, we extended, we have an informal working group talking about plans for the, for which the road was part of the discussion and therefore sent to Corporation Council for their legal opinion. It's an informal working group to develop some kind of consensus for conservation land purposes and plans in the next few years ahead. The group, the Neighborhood Board is, was extended, meeting invitations, as well as the four major land owners, DLNR, UH, Board of Water Supply, and the Wong family. We have groups from different community conservation-focused longtime groups like Malama Manoa Outdoor Circle, Cola Watershed. We've been just having informal discussions until we come up with some consensus and get some clarification regarding the road ownership issue. So at this point, there's nothing to report except that it's, we're informally meeting. And when we have something more substantive and useful, we'll certainly share it. And you guys are welcome. Bob, Dave, you're on the email thread. Kate?
Thank you. Um, sorry, Dave, Whitney?
Whitney was first.
Go ahead.
Uh, thanks. Thank you, Chair. I guess I have a sort of general comment or request, which was if this working group was sort of put together in order to get the bead on what the larger community wants for this, you know, the future of this. I think that the larger community, I think that there needs to be minutes being made by whoever organized this group for these working meetings going forward so that the community can actually stay informed about what's being discussed by whoever is, you know, invited. Since I don't think that general community members are allowed to go to this, I think that they should just be included at least in far, insofar as being updated as to like what the discussion has been about.
Thank you. Um, Dave?
Thanks, Chair. I just wanted to follow up with, on a discussion that, that you, Chair, and I had a few days ago when we ran into each other at Coffee B and Tea Leaf, which was, we talked briefly about the working group, which the two of us had basically just, just found out about. And we talked about the possibility of appointing a Manoa Neighborhood Board member to attend the working group meetings as our representative. So I wanted to suggest that since we have forum at this meeting, Chair, someone be appointed. I would be interested in representing the board, the working group, and I'd also be agreeable to having a second person on as a co-representative if you want to have more than one person.
Let me just double check because the working group, the the Paradise Park Working Group is on the agenda. But the, but the motion to approve, the formally approved of a representative for the board to attend these meetings is not a line item on the agenda. I just need a clarification from the Neighborhood Board Assistant if we need that to be a line item on the agenda to be able to vote on it.
Hi, Chair. I would say that the item on the agenda is under Presentations, and it's, again, not very specific. I would probably recommend maybe saving it for the next meeting only for that reason. It's not under, you know, explicitly board business and appointing a representative of the board.
Thank you for that. In which case, though, Ellen, go ahead and speak first and I'll make my comments on it, on that particular issue.
Okay, thank you. Just, I guess, for general information to the people that are on the working group and also to our board that maybe hasn't followed the Paradise Park issue for a long time. I have been one that has followed it for a long time. And back in two thousand eight, I think when Governor Lingle was there, the, the state wanted to buy all of Paradise Park, all hundred and twenty-six acres of it at that time, and the Wong's wanted to sell it at that time. And Linda Lingle did not release the funds, so the state didn't acquire it. And they wanted to acquire it to leave it as conservation land in perpetuity and not do any development. And that same thing came up in like twenty sixteen. Leah Hong from Trust for Public Lands met with Darrell Wong and offered to buy the whole hundred and twenty-six acres for its land value, which is about five million, five and a half million. Wong's bought it from the Roman Catholic Church for five million. And so Wong's were not willing to sell that. So Wong's have listed in, with a realtor in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, kind of the junk parcels of Paradise Park that they want to sell. And I think they're hoping the city will come up with the money and want to buy it. But those are the parcels that, that include the road, the building, the parking lot, the traffic, lion arboretum, and all of those kind of things, which are multi-millions of dollars to upgrade and to maintain. And then Wong's want to re, so they only want to sell seventy-six acres. And they have it listed in twenty twenty-two asking price of twenty million. And in twenty twenty-three, they upped it by two million, and they're asking twenty-two million. And the whole of it, which is a hundred and seventy-six, twenty-six acres, is worth five million. So that's like a no-go, you know, from the state or from the city. And so Leah Hong and Trust for Public Lands, their offer is still on the table, but Wong's don't want to do it. They want to make money and, and I think they're just trying to sell it to the city and have a bunch of nonprofits involved and how they can redevelop it and use that CUP process through the BLNR that we opposed so strongly when they wanted to develop their tourist circus. And I think they're just going to sit in the back of the valley and say, you know, city or state, you own the expensive part, you run the expensive part, you widen the road so we can bring our twenty-six tour buses a day. so we can bring our twenty six tour buses a day and run a tourist circus under the cause of uh Hawaiian heritage education or something. So I think it's really that same old thing, you know, it's the same pig in new clothes. So um I think that the city or the state should just not buy that portion and do all that and enable them. Um, and and that's just kind of the history on the whole thing. So whatever the working group kind of comes up with whatever they're they they want to do, um you know, they can do it, but but the community historically has put these things down because it just developed into uh volunturism and bringing tourists in to educate them about Hawaii and you know, they don't want that anyway, right? The tourists, you know. Um, so I just think it's it's just kind of a guise to do under education. I also would comment that I think that our board should not have representatives on this working group because the working group may come to the board and ask for some kind of a motion on it and ask ask for our recommendation for something or or put up one some kind of resolution. Um, and so, you know, I think that's kind of a conflict if we have Dave and whoever else um in the working group helping make these decisions. And we're not sitting back as the objective other hearing from the community and trying to balance these things and what the board could recommend or not recommend. So, thank you.
Thanks, Ellen. On that issue regarding a representative of the board on the on the um on the working group, my opinion is that actually wouldn't be a bad thing to have as long as the board approves such a person to to attend on their behalf. Just because it would be a it would be an official outlet. And if the if the working group does want us to work on a uh would have a suggestion for a resolution for the board's consideration, that's something that we can discuss at that time, but we'd also be at at least somebody would actively be able to inform us about that and be able to work with us if that's necessary in an individual capacity or as a or virtual representative on of the board working on them and giving us updates on their developments with the working group, so be it. Um, but at this point, because um that as um the neighborhood representative, neighborhood assistant said that it should be a separate line item. We won't take a vote on that particular issue. Something to mull about and consider and let it gestate for a little bit for the next neighborhood uh board meeting where we can actually consider whether to have a representative of the board at these working group meetings. Is there anybody who else wants to speak about this particular issue? About the Paradise Park Working Group, the resolution that was tied into this uh item on the agenda is not happening. Oh, um, Member Bosso?
Is that, thank you, Chair. Is there um a media, the next meeting for this working group? Has that already been decided when that will take place? Is Melvia still there? Maybe she knows? Or who whoever is organizing this?
Hi, this is Melvia. Yes, we've been meeting um this is going to be our third meeting and we're meeting informally. So there's no need for minutes and public notice. There is um a resolution, a city resolution that will establish um a formal working group with the same kinds of purposes. Whether or not it's of any value, should this informal group come to viable consensus or not is to be determined. So I think um we have um made some pretty good progress in the short time and um being very efficient. So like I said, right now, it's a, you know, the neighbor, I think Ellen is um very astute recognizing a possible conflict event, but it certainly is up to your board chair and vice chair. Uh, they do get the email notices, but um follow your leadership, yeah.
So, sorry, may I ask who um who the working group is open to? Is it open to other members of the public?
Right now, the informal working group is directed towards those who have had immediate activity in the last five years or stretching back to ten years. Um, but primarily it was the the landowners, those directly involved as it relates to the road ownership issue. Um, and right now it's getting consensus about what conservation districts are. They're not for commercial purposes. I think we all understand that. So we'll we'll keep the neighborhood board and you know, through your chair, vice chair informed.
But I got you.
Chair, uh I'll be real quick, uh just a couple of things. Uh one is to um the point brought my member Watson and uh earlier uh uh Joe in Okamoto regarding um the Paradise Park area and being used for commercial purposes. Um, I did come across a resolution that was written some point in twenty twenty two, though I'm not sure what exact month um their board passed out that um specified that the area should be set aside for non-commercial and like underlined the term non-commercial uh purposes only. So we have given our input on that as a board, though I'm not sure um you know, how um how the resolution was taken or if we have any action or any uh commit commitments based on the resolution. Uh, the other thing that I wanted to say real quick regarding the working group is that um Melvia said that I as vice chair am on it and have been getting emails, but it's I I haven't been seeing any emails. And it was my understanding that I'm not on it. Um our board has a seat on that working group, but it's only one seat and it belongs to Chair Zane. So currently, he's the only person on our board who is authorized to take part, and that can't change unless he were to appoint a representative.
Thank you. And for the record as well, I have not been able to attend these meetings for the working group um due to other time commitments. And so um in that sense, it may become necessary for me to appoint a proxy and um have a formal line uh formal agenda item on the next meeting to appoint a pro- my proxy to sit in on my behalf for the board on these working group meetings if I am technically the only one who's getting these um invitations for the board to sit on on this working group. But I think that would be an item for another for the next meeting. And we do need to move on as Ray nine eighteen to the next agenda item, which is a discussion about the Manoa Neighborhood Board meeting in person. There have been several members of the community who have emailed members of the board and who've discussed it with others as well about the potential of meeting in person. We've had this discussion before. For those of you who have not attended, uh joined us previously, we used to meet in person at Noalani Elementary School. However, we have not been able to um get the access to Noalani Elementary School, especially because of how long some of these meetings last and in consideration of um the yellow broadcasting requirements as well as um the school's requirements to have their poor custodian who works, who lives in Manoa Lani um needing to close up shop before we generally end our meetings because of how busy our agenda items are. Um, members of the board have tried to look for other places as well to potentially host the board. We tried but the Menoah Gymnasium that also fell through as well. Um, one area that um we discussed about informally, and this is a line item on the agenda where we can actually discuss about this formally, is the potential of because of looking at and uh sending feelers out to the University of Hawaii to see if they have the space available on their campus to host the neighborhood board and um as an in-person location, which is why I'm opening up to the board, Ellen, to have to present comments and feedback regarding this and other suggestions to be in person. Ellen?
Thank you. Um, you know, I think um we would, we would want a hybrid meeting, right? And not just an in-person meeting without. And I don't know what happened with uh Manoa District Park Gymnasium. Um, I know that Manoa Elementary School, I don't know if they are hosting any meetings now, but I know that the Neighborhood Security Watch meeting on November fifteenth is going to be in their cafeteria. So in the past, they they uh were willing to host the Neighborhood Board meeting, but the Neighborhood Board wanted to stay at Noalani. And um the um Manoa Elementary School, if they're issuing permits or having any meetings on there at all, which kind of seems like they are with the Neighborhood Security Watch meeting, maybe we can check into them again because they did not have a problem with our meetings going late because they have a janitor that that lives close by. So when we are done with a meeting, we as a board lock the doors and then the chair or whoever calls the janitor and the janitor swings by to double check. So that might be a possibility. Um, I can ask uh Manoa Elementary School if they're if they're open to hosting meetings now since the pandemic. If you like.
If you, if you would, that'd be great. Um, I agree that a hybrid uh a hybrid format is ideal. Um, I don't know the difficulties about hosting a hybrid meeting at uh Manoa Elementary School's cafeteria. Um, if you could also discuss the technical issues, wifi, things like that, that that'd also be something we'd appreciate and get a heads up on. Um, University of Hawaii came up in mind because they do have classrooms and setups that way. They probably a lot more technologically equipped to host those um um those hybrid style meetings. The other problem being however, that parking is expensive at at University of Hawaii. So understandably, it's could be a hassle for people to attend in-person meetings and having to pay a significant amount for parking fees during those meetings. So that is one thing that is a consideration. Um, unfortunately, Elmer had to leave already. He cannot speak regarding the park situation at University of Hawaii after hours, which technically our meetings would be under. So something to consider moving forward. Patty?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to share that I've been attending just a single sport meeting. Um, I did it onsite and also online regarding um the Pohor Ridge issue. And they seem to have a really well-run hybrid meeting where there's some residents that show up and some of the official were there in person and also they have uh some board member in in person and also some board members online. So it seemed to work out fine if they can find a location. I I've heard some residents who would like to attend in person. And I also know some would like to attend online because it's more convenient for them. So I think it'll be great if we can find a location that have the hybrid meeting where the neighborhood assistant is actually there on site with the camera folks and it worked really well, I think. I think it could work for us if we can find a place. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, I see a hand raised from the neighborhood assistant. Go ahead. Hello?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, now I can hear you.
Sorry about that. Um, yeah, I just wanted to say that we definitely recommend uh the boards that have hybrid meetings if they so choose, just because it, you know, obviously it helps with um engagement. A lot of times the reps can't come um in person, but they're still able to tune in online. But as far as choosing a facility, definitely the best way to kickstart that process would be for the board to either hand off uh site locations to the NCO. That way we can actually scout out and how you're talking about, you know, reaching out to these facilities, we can actually go ahead and do that since we'll be the ones um securing a contract with wherever you guys eventually decide to go. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And that's good to keep in mind as well. Uh, Dave?
Thanks, Chair. Um, I'm likewise in favor of the hybrid model just because that way, you know, people who want to stay online can stay online, people who want to go in person can go in person. Um, but simply because we have brought this up both um a couple of times with US Chair of Robert Zane, but also at at least ones with the prior chair and uh we haven't seen much movement on this. I wanted to to know if it would be um in order and proper for me to propose a motion uh directing uh Chair Zane to make this happen uh between the end of this meeting and the beginning of our um January meeting during that winter recess.
Uh, just for clarification, we're directing this uh question about whether that is okay for me to make a motion on this item? Was that the direct uh question to the neighborhood assistant or to me?
Uh, to whoever can answer the procedural question, but essentially my my point is we talked about it a whole lot, but we haven't really gotten to like a a definite resolution or a clear plan of action. So I was thinking about making a motion to specify that we're voting, we're doing it, Chair's gonna make it happen, and I want to know if that was appropriate or uh useful.
Um, I don't think it's necessary. Um, oh wait, hold on, I'll let the neighborhood assistant answer that question, actually.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I would just, I would say at this point, uh, what I would recommend is if you were to make a motion to move this process along is just to have like um the board move that certain locations, whether it's UH or Manoa Elementary, you move that those locations be brought to the NCO for scouting purposes. I think that that would be the most beneficial way. If you guys have a couple locations in mind that we could scout in between now and your next meeting, then you guys would have to obviously lock down a uh facility first before um having your first meeting there, obviously.
But we can ask the NCO to scout on our behalf and then they can present at the next board meeting. And then we can make a formal vote to actually um move forward with having hybrid meetings at that location.
Yes, if you guys, if you guys pass the motion to have a couple of locations and then, yes, in the interim, we could scout them. And then you guys would be able to um take that knowledge and make a decision in in January.
Okay. Thank you for that. Uh, Joe? Joe, you're muted still?
Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to, uh, we've identified two locations, Manoa Elementary School and most of us not too excited about the University of Hawaii, but maybe something could be done about the parking or whatever. Um, and then the uh I, those are the two that we know. Uh, I'm not personally in favor of the gym because I can't really hear anything in that gym. Um, but maybe the side rooms, uh if that's a location for us. Uh, any of the rooms around the gym uh in Manoa and and if others have other suggestions. So we can move quickly to ask Mr. Coley to go ahead and do that on our behalf.
Thank you. Ellen? Ellen, you're muted.
Yeah, why do, I mean, we've, we've approaches with the NCO in the past when Kama was our president or our chair and the NCO just kind of dropped the ball. So I know that you guys are short staffed. You don't have neighborhood assistants. Um, so what confidence do we have of this scouting thing? I mean, in the past, a board member has checked on with Manoa Park or with Manoa Elementary School to even see if they're doing it. Um, and then, of course, we'd have to pass it on to the NCO because they'd have to make an agreement with you or work on money or whatever. So I mean, Jackson, are you saying that that you're our guy and you're gonna do this? Um, and get back to us in January with the information that that you have the time and inclination to do this, or it's just gonna get passed on to the NCO and then the next guy's not gonna be there and nothing's gonna happen? Otherwise, you know, we'll just ask. I mean, I'll just find out the scoops on Manoa Elementary School. That's what we did in the past. So and then we decided to stay with Noalani. We just compared the two. So anyway, educate us.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, absolutely. If if uh members of the board are able and willing to make the connection with the facility make the connection with the facility themselves, that is obviously strongly recommended. I'm just saying that you know, if if you guys can't take action on it tonight, or you guys aren't, you know, wanting to, then then I I was just listing another alternative, but definitely um, that would be that would be a ideal if the board member themselves could um scout a facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Um. In which case, though, my suggestion on this is to to as have both parties tackle this issue. Tackling an issue from multiple directions is never hurts as well. So I would encourage Ellen and anybody else to look into places and see about that and bring bring that to the board. And I also would like to see about a motion to also um um have the NCO scout out Manoa Elementary School's cafeteria as well as University of Hawaii for the possibilities of hosting neighborhood board at future meetings and a hybrid meetings. Um, and again, and Ellen, I will ride herd on the Neighborhood Commission to get updates and figure out what's going on occasionally. So that way there will be something to report at the January meeting. Ellen?
Thank you. Um, I think it should be one way or the other because otherwise I'm going to go up tomorrow or the next day and talk to the office at Manoa Elementary School and get all the scoops of whether they're doing it or not or whatever. And at the same time, then a couple hours later, Jackson's going to contact them asking for the same thing. So I really think it, you know, it's not good to have us all calling up Manoa Elementary School like that, or or are we interested in looking at Manoa Innovation Center? They have a small, fairly small presentation room, but it depends on how many people from the community want to go and how many is going to be online. Certainly, uh, they're well-equipped electronically to handle that. So and whatever happened with uh Manoa Park Gym or classrooms or something. I don't know whatever happened with that. That was in the comma era. So I don't know where that lies. But anyway, I just don't want us both pestering Manoa Elementary School.
Dave?
Just to clarify, um board members and or the NCO are would just be scouting and then we would reconvene at our next meeting and take this up again and list out the areas that we've scouted and then vote on where to go to. Is that how it would be happening?
Yep, that's the plan.
All right, and um can we simply tell the NA to uh scout areas in our neighborhood board district, or does this require a formal motion?
For what? Uh, Jackson, go ahead.
I I would recommend that if if like how um Member Watson is saying that uh she has connections with uh the elementary school, I agree that it shouldn't be coming from two sides that um if those locations sound good, uh, the places that you guys talked about and you're able to do it yourselves, that would definitely be the easiest way. And then at the and then so like, let's say that the elementary school is open to hosting you guys, then I mean, it would just be a co- a conversation between um getting it on the agenda for January, saying, oh, Manoa Elementary said that they are willing to host us. Um, is there a motion to, you know, start holding our board meetings there? So we can cut out a lot of the middle work if you guys already have an idea of where you want to go and already have those connections. I really only said that the NCO could do it if you guys didn't have, you know, ideas for um facilities in your in your district. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, in which case then?
Chair, Helena Kama has her hand raised.
Oh, um. Helen, go ahead. There you go. Yes.
I can speak. Can you hear me? Um, may I suggest that you um look um creatively at the Manoa Library and also the Manoa Theater.
Manoa Theater is an interesting option. That hasn't come up before. Thank you for that suggestion.
But the Manoa Library, um, there is a small meeting room, but the foyer can be possibly used for a larger group. Um. And you don't have tables, so the the chairs can be lined up and you can squeeze more people in in a smaller meeting room. So those are possibilities.
My concern with the Manoa Library, however, is if they're open as late as ten o'clock for us. That's my one concern.
Um. The time is not the problem, the the whether or not they're having a play or or something is if the timing would be, but you know, I mean, they know what shows that they're going to have and when they're dark. And um I think the max is a hundred fifty seats. So.
Well, look, I mean, we'll have to look into the um the um the theater. Uh, my question was about whether the library was open after uh for from seven to ten PM.
No, they let you stay late. I mean, we're gonna have Malama is gonna have their Christmas party in the evening there.
Oh, okay. Thank you for that. We'll look into that.
Ellen, I believe. Robert, this is Linda Legram. May I speak?
Go ahead.
Uh, Helen, I think Robert is talking about the library past ten. Is that correct?
Yes, I was only with the library, so.
The theater is going to be difficult because as Helen said, it's, you know, whether or not they're they have a play, you could just it wouldn't be something that could consistently be done the first Wednesday every month, I don't believe. So that's something to consider. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No, no, no. Thank you for uh, thank you for helping clarify this for the members of the audience as well. Joan?
Yes, and given the fact that we've already gotten about five places and only one person volunteering to do one place, how about we let the neighborhood assistant also help us and do the other places? So not to duplicate Manoa Elementary, Ellen's going to be there. We'll just get a a motion on the floor to have them do the uh uh other things that we're we're thinking about. The UH, maybe Manoa, you know, things that are the Innovation Center. Okay, the UH, the Innovation Center, the uh library, um uh Manoa Valley Theater. Those are four. And and if anyone comes up with another one, so we can have a number of people working on this. It it doesn't hurt. You know, then we just have a lot of feedback, so we can really get something done.
That's a good idea as well. Um, Member Lumen?
I was just going to mention there's a a space on the backside of the park, the part of the park. Um. Down by the pool where the community garden meets. And uh, that's a pretty nice space. I I'd like to look into that, so.
Okay. Um, Jackson?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I I would just recommend, I mean, these all sound like great locations, but there's just no way that uh my office is going to look into six different locations for you guys, uh, just being realistic. It's it's not me personally who does it. Um. I I mean, I love I love Manoa. I I went to Midpac as well, so I I know the area pretty well. But I would just say that, I mean, if you guys have like a good idea for a location, I mean, you really shouldn't need to scout more than one, two, maybe three locations. I mean, like an abundance of information and knowledge about these different facilities is great, but I mean, if there's one that's clearly better than the rest, I mean, there shouldn't need to, you know, be all this unnecessary work. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave?
Chair, uh, since NCO is uh reluctant to do scouting for us and since running up on time, let's all just do it independently. It it might be duplicated, that that's fine. We'll just all talk to the places that we know or can think of. And then we'll just come back at next meeting and compare notes and see who had good things to say. And then we can do a vote. Does that does that sound good to everyone?
Ellen?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I'll do Manoa Elementary School. Clyde, do you want to do that place? By the Manoa Gardens, whatever you're talking about. And Helen, you can check out the theater. Right? Yes? You know, as long as different people are willing to do it and then you can tell us what you find in January and uh.
I can do library and the Innovation Center.
Yeah, that do, yeah, Dave will do the library and the Innovation Center. And Clyde will do by Manoa Gardens and I'll do Manoa Elementary School. And Helen, you know about the theater or or Linda, you want to check out the theater? Ellen will do it, yeah? And then in January, we'll just all report back so we can just have it listed as an agenda item that we find out the reports from the possible sites. Yeah, why don't we do that?
Okay with that. At which point then I think that will end this particular subject. I don't see any more comments or votes on it. So thank you for a good discussion on this issue. Um, I'm going to take the agenda out of or um you know, no, I'll keep it to the same uh agenda order. Uh, next item is board business, filling of vacancies. We have two vacancies in Sub District Three and five vacancies in Sub District Four. Um. Something for the board's consideration as well is whether or not we want to actually maintain um districts as the um as the defining um characteristic for um areas defining on representation. I know we want to have representation everywhere in the valley, but this has been a recurring issue and um moving, I guess, well, I'm let me put it out first to see if anybody wants to fill up any of the vacancies. Is there any? Oh, Patty, you have your hand raised in this issue?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I would like to ask if um um former member, Robert Fox, would like to rejoin our our board. He's in Sub District Four and I know last time it wasn't able to get a consensus and I would like to really encourage all of us fellow member to put him back on our board. I think he's a really um engaged member and he brought a lot of experience and knowledge to the team. I would like really like him to represent Sub District Four, especially right now. We have five seats open. I'm the only person in the district. Um, I know somebody expressed some concern, but I really want everybody to put that aside, personal feelings aside, and really do well for the Manoa Neighborhood and bring him back. I would like to ask all of you, uh, well, first of all, I'd ask if he's available and willing to come back and I would really like all of you to support him. For the name, for the name of the valley. Thank you.
Mr. Fox, will you accept the nomination or or the request to join?
I will accept the nomination. Thank you.
Um, so would like to talk a little bit about yourself as well?
Um, I retired. Well, I tried to retire two years ago. I'm terrible at retirement because I don't know how to say no. But I'm doing my best. I'm getting better at it. Um, I've lived uh at this house since nineteen ninety-three, I think. Um, I keep the house in California, but two years ago, I decided I'd just leave California and I'd be here permanently. I moved to Honolulu in nineteen seventy-six, uh, opened a restaurant in nineteen seventy-seven. Um. And I've been in love with the islands for a long, long time. Uh, I'm very connected to the community. Thrilled to be where I live. I live on University Avenue before Miley Way, across from the University of Hawaii. And we just have really good neighbors around here. They are such nice people. I've I've been thrilled to meet uh people that who have bought homes here of late. And they're just really good folks. Um, and they uh express interest in uh participating in the Neighborhood Association, which I think is great. In California, um I was president of seven different neighborhood associations I founded in the city. I served as Executive Director of the Council of Neighborhood Organizations uh for over twelve years. So neighborhoods are one of my things, I guess. And I enjoy the camaraderie and I like the idea that we can come together and discuss things civilly. Um. And I think that the results have always been really, really uh dynamic. I love it. I just enjoyed this conversation this evening about Paradise Park. It was just really uh informative. And I think you all made a really great decision. So, you know, wow, I like the way this process works. That's me. Okay.
Thank you. Um, let's see, I believe we still all members are currently sitting present.
They're having a hard time hearing you.
You having a hard time? Can you hear me better? Hear me better? No, no. Hear me now? Yeah, calling it off. Sorry. Can you hear me better?
Yep, yes.
Okay. Um. I need, I think we 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 need a motion first to ha- to accept the nomination of Robert Fox as a sitting member. Oh, sorry, uh, neighborhood assistant. Go ahead, please, correct me if I'm wrong.
Uh, yeah, Chair, we just need a nomination from uh one of the board members. I I don't know if um, I don't know if Patty was making.
I think Patty Juana made that nomination.
Yeah, if if she already made the nomination, that's all you guys need and I can go to a uh a roll call if you like.
Roll call vote, please.
Okay, so the motion on the table is to appoint uh Robert Fox to one of the Sub District Four vacancies. Um, I just want to preface, I I would need to uh double-check your um your residency, but I I mean, I since you said you were on the board previously, I think it's all good, but um and I will conduct the roll call vote now. Watson?
Yes.
Basel?
Aye.
Nagaji?
Aye.
Fukamoto?
Aye.
Lumen?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Hoth?
Aye.
Chong?
Aye.
Kawano?
Aye.
Zane?
Aye.
Okay, uh, the motion passes with ten votes for uh Robert Fox. Chair, uh, before anything else, I would just recommend a quick recess so I can actually uh administer the oath of office to Robert.
Go ahead. We will recess that Robert can do the oath of office.
Okay, thank you. Give me one second, Robert, while I pull it up. So I'm going to just read it and uh if you could just say at the end whether you agree or not, that should suffice, okay?
Thank you.
Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully support the Constitution and the laws of the United States of America, the Constitution and laws of the State of Hawaii, the Charter and laws of the city and county of Honolulu and the provisions of the Neighborhood Plan and will conscientiously and impartially discharge your duties to the best of your ability as a member of the Neighborhood Board to which you have been appointed? Do you agree? Great, congratulations.
Thank you.
Very much. We will now return to the business of the Neighborhood Board. Um. Is there anybody else who would like to join us on the board now that we've now reduced Sub District Four's vacancies down to four? I am not seeing or hearing anybody. Um, as I was mentioning before, uh, Mr. Fox joined us again on the Neighborhood Board. Uh, one thing that was brought up at the Conference of Chairs that happened earlier this week was the possibility of considering um removing the necessity of having uh members of the board based on district and just having it as an open call for people to sit on the board regardless of what district they live in. Something to consider, not saying that we should do it or not at this time, just putting it out there for everybody's consideration to think about it. Just wait for the next meeting. We're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the Wednesday, August 2nd, 2023 memorandum for the record. As, um, one quick caveat, I know this has been a recurring issue for the Neighborhood Board, this board in particular, we got the approval of minutes. The Conference of Chairs has discussed this issue in length. Uh, me and Member Nagaji have sat in, Member Nagaji brought up our board's concerns about this issue. However, the NCO was very clear that they are leaving it to the boards themselves to do the, to make additional edits to any minutes. They will look into trying, moving forward to try to make changes to memorandums when there are not quorum, like we have with that memorandum of minutes, but, um, they said that ultimately, it was, it is up to the Neighborhood Boards themselves to make additional improvements to the minutes. Also regarding this issue, I can say now that, uh, me, at least me and Member Nagaji now have confirmed access to a Google Share Drive. And moving forward, the Neighborhood Board Commission and us encourage the use of the Google Drive to add items or add attachments that are sent to us for the consideration of the board to look at. Previously, we did not have access to this, and we did not understand how to access this thing. We now have that access. We can add and remove items from that shared drive for, for meetings, make edits as necessary on digital documents, and I believe that that link may not, can be shared, so that people can view documents, but cannot edit or remove document, add or remove documents. Um, only me and my chair Nagaji currently have those permissions to add, remove, or edit documents within that shared drive for Neighborhood Board meetings. That also includes items like the list and the, um, more detailed minutes that are of concern. There's another item about minutes as well, that moving forward, the Neighborhood Board Commission also is encouraging the use of video minutes through a link on YouTube to our Neighborhood Board meetings, which will be also on YouTube and posted on YouTube. And that will be, and item, uh, different items on the agenda will be linked via timestamp on YouTube. So that's another way that they can also track, um, meeting minutes as well. That being said, just want to give you an update on those, and I will hear from Member Koff first.
So, uh, to the Neighborhood Assistant Judy Anna Smith, and she wrote back to me on Monday about this subject. In regards to, I'm just reading what she wrote back. In regard to the board's discussion of further, or further discussion on topics, we do not want to paraphrase the discussion. The timestamp on the YouTube video is there for the listener to hear, to see the discussion verbatim. In the past, board members from other boards would complain, this is not what they said. So the discussion gets taken out of context. As a result of the, the timestamping is there for more transparency, to hear the opinions of the board members, community, and whoever is speaking. Uh, I want to parenthetically add that it is a grave responsibility to paraphrase what someone has said in a board meeting or anyplace else for legal purposes. If one does that, and one makes an error, then it's considered a fault of some sort. If that error causes damage to somebody, to their reputation, they can certainly sue whoever they felt made that error. I know we are protected by the City Corporate Council for our behavior, but I frankly feel that it, and I have felt this way for a long time. I have, I want to add, it's not material to this conversation, but for 40 years, I took notes very, very accurately, because I needed to present them in court or in forensic situations, and so they had to be perfect. I know this is not a thing that I take lightly. I feel that with this broad and adequate opportunity to see the minutes, to see the, the statements as they're being made and referenced on YouTube, a permanent record, there's not a need for a paper record like this. And I think pointing us in the direction as they do in the minutes, to the actually at one hour and 22, 2 minutes and 14 seconds that was discussed, takes you right there to, to that discussion, and you can see for yourself anything that's of concern to you. And so with that being said, I think in the issue of, you know, I've been the Secretary of the Board for many years now, at least 12 years, and I worked with Russell Ho, and he, we didn't have this. We didn't, we had, sometimes they would take pictures of us, and sometimes, who knows where the pictures went? If we get them, if they had the right cameras out, it wasn't always that easy. So he would dutifully actually take it down in, like, and, uh, stenography, he, he, and he'd do a terrific job, and still yet, people would complain he didn't tell them what they wanted, and he didn't say what they said. I've been through it, and I really think, this is my true opinion, that this is unnecessary. I hate to put someone in, there's enough to actually do to take care of cases and not to bother us with this. This is my feeling about it. And I'm very strong about it, and I'd like to just bring these minutes up, and let us pass them and not start in about this thing anymore. That's, that's the way I feel. Okay.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to recognize Ellen, but we're going to, Ellen, we're going to warn you, we only have five minutes left. Please make it very quick. Ellen, can you hear me?
Thank you.
Having a hard time hearing you, Chair.
Very well, but anyway, um, I wanted to let everybody know that I talked to Lloyd, the Executive Secretary, about this thing. And basically, the board is responsible for their minutes, and the kind of cryptic kind of junk minutes the NCO has been taking, that's all they're going to do, and they're going to say comments and questions, and, and rubber stamp it, and that's apparently, they talked to the Office of Information Practices, and that's the letter of the law, so they'll let that happen, irregardless of the spirit of the law, even though the Neighborhood Plan says that the written minutes are official, and they should be detailed enough to represent all participants. We can't argue with the Executive Secretary, so the NCO, as we knew it for the last 10, 20 years, isn't there anymore. So we're going to have these cryptic minutes, um, and there's nothing we can do about it, and maybe if there's something important, like an Alawai vote, or an NBC vote, or something, then, uh, some of us board members can elaborate on that, because we really need to reflect the will of the people. But, so if the new requirement is you got to be computer savvy, and you got to have access, and you got to look up YouTube, so be it. I mean, it's the NCO's game, not mine, so.
Um, okay.
Ellen, as timekeeper, I have to note, there's two minutes left.
Yeah, I was going to say the exact same point. Um, and I'm going to, I'm going to ask at this point, I'm going to end discussion at this point. I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the memorandum from August. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joan Koff.
Why don't you just include all the minutes that are on here? As one lump.
Jackson, can we do that?
Uh, yes, you guys can do all of them together. I would just, I would just say, yeah, if you can just be clear on who's the first and who's the second, but you guys can do it all.
I'm, um, I would need a motion to approve the Wednesday, August 2nd memorandum, September 6th meeting minutes, October 4th meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion.
Motion.
Motion by Joan Koff. Do I have a second?
One second.
Second by Ellen Watson. Are there any objections to the approval of all these meeting minutes? Hearing and seeing none. The August, September, and October minutes are approved as is. Thank you very much on that.
Chair, we've got one minute left.
One minute left. I'm just going to do real quick for the community concern. I'm going to have to skip the Alawai.
The Alawai.
Real quick, Ellen, is it an announcement?
You have 30 seconds.
Go for it, Ellen, real quick. Hello? Hello, go for it.
Elton, go for it.
Elton, go for it, go, real quick. Elton?
Elton, just start speaking. No one can hear you.
Yeah, sorry, um, let's, let's meet about this. Let's meet about this in January.
Okay.
Let's take a recess.
I'm sorry, ladies and gentlemen, um, the next meeting.
If there's something you want to inform the community about that's here, then you can say it, even though it won't be on the recording. Can you say something very quickly, Elton? For the benefit of those who are here?
The SEIS will be released in December sometime, uh, so, or, or late, late November. So we'll have time in January to have a resolution.
Okay, but everyone who is here and hears that, uh, you know, start informing folks that it's on our radar, so that it's on the wider valley's radar, maybe. Yeah?
Right, and you can have that resolution on January's agenda. Because we'll work on the resolution over the Christmas, yeah? Yeah, Elton?
Yes.
Okay, it's 10:01. I'm going to have to call the adjournment of the, of this, of this meeting of the Neighborhood Board. Next meeting will be on January 3. January 3 will be the next meeting. The agenda is wrong. There was, there will be no meeting in December. You can view us on WebEx, and it will still have an inside location at Kapalama Halli, Conference Room 153. And we will work on trying to get a new area as well. Olelo rebroadcast will be on the second and fourth Saturdays of the month at 3 o'clock PM, or every third Tuesday at 9 o'clock PM, or online at olelo.org. Thank you very much, everybody. Sorry for going later and for not getting to all the agenda items. And Happy New Year, Merry Christmas, Happy Thanksgiving. And yes, wishing everybody the best. Robert, welcome on board again, and we will see you all in January.